Hi, welcome back to the public hearing and public meeting of February 25th, 2025. We're going to resume this afternoon's session with public hearing item number nine. And this meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Center Street, as well as through Zoom and being livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. And with that, I will turn it over to our Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll start today's afternoon agenda with item nine, LPC 25-05359. This is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Queens, Block 77, Lot 50, 2120 45th Avenue in the Hunters Point Historic District. This is an Italianate-style rowhouse designed by Spencer Root and John Rust and built in 1872. The application is to construct a rear yard addition.
Commissioners, our presenter is remote today. So if you could just please unmute yourself and state your name for the record. Click on your screen to advance slides and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Victor Hahn and I am the Architect applicant for the subject application located on 2120 45th Avenue, a property located in the Hunters Point Historic District in Long Island City, Borough of Queens. The application before you is to propose a two-story rear extension over the previously approved basement sunroom. We are proposing a 10-foot enlargement towards the rear of the property and leave approximately 10 feet above the existing basement sunroom for a walkout terrace from the dining room on the first floor, similar to many of the homes along this street frontage. The two-story over the pre-existing sunroom would be aligned in terms of depth and height as the immediate adjacent building along the Westerly property line. We are also proposing to rebuild the sunroom, as well as the existing third floor to better support and for structural practicality. The finish line or the finish will be with brick, as it currently exists on the third floor with a stucco finish, and precast lintels and sills will be introduced for the windows, existing windows or the new windows that will be in place in the exact same location, as well as the dimensions. No roof structures are proposed under this project and all enlargements will not be visible from the street. We are proposing to maintain the rear eve elevation or the elevation of the rear eaves, and open railing system is also proposed, again, similar to adjacent properties to provide for a more unobstructive view as possible. There's no zoning bulk or yard issues, nor any other code relief is required or requested to facilitate this project. So to quickly review, there's an existing sunroom.
All right, Mr. Harala. Are you going through slides? Because we're still on the first slide.
I was just going to go through the slides now. So this is the site plan. We're introducing a 10-foot enlargement towards the rear above the existing sunroom location, which was previously approved. This would be aligned with the Westerly property, which already has a two-story and a roof penthouse that was added. Block diagram will indicate all of the existing rear extensions that were proposed. The light blue or cyan will indicate the bulkheads that was previously approved and built along this block frontage. So this is our subject property. This is the adjacent that we're trying to align with in terms of the height and the extension towards the back. So we will pretty much be aligned with this property on the Westerly side of the property. Go into the thing, it'll better show if on the elevation. So this is the existing elevation. This is the existing two-story above the basement on the adjacent property, as well as the bulkhead. This is our property here. And there's also a similar extension that was made on the Easterly side, two houses across. This is our proposed elevation, same terrace walkout, open railings, and the height will pretty much be aligned with the existing adjacent building on the Westerly side. This is their existing bulkhead. And we're proposing or by code requirements to put in a railing in the rear of the building as we are making a renovation towards this property. This is the existing conditions of the property with the adjacent. It's, I realize that it's kind of tough to see with the trees and shrubbery. This is the extension or previously approved and built extension that's on the Easterly side of the property. This is the existing sunroom that we are proposing to rebuild. So we are coming out with the two-story extension over the existing sunroom, which will also be rebuilt. This is the third floor in the rear that will also be rebuilt because of structural purposes. But again, we will maintain the brick and stucco finish with the precast lintels on top and sills on the bottom. From this street view diagram or section, as you can see, none of the enlargements are visible from the street. They will be contained within the rear. And this pretty much aligns with the existing rear enlargement of the building on the Westerly side of the property and window details. If you have any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
When you say pretty much align, is it aligning or not? Or if it's not aligning, how much is it off from the lining?
This portion of the parapet, because we have to maintain the 42-inch parapet, when I measured it, we were about 12 inches or so higher than this parapet, which is not 42 inches.
The two walls will align.
In depth.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. And does that align with the addition at number 21-26? To the right of the blue?
You mean this?
Uh, well, note in your block plan.
Okay.
If you go to your block plan. So the red addition to the right of the blue addition that you just described.
Right, the blue addition is immediately to the west. And this red addition is a one-story enlargement over the basement. So there.
In terms of the plan, does it project further than the blue? Or align with it or less than?
It is pretty much, all the rear pretty much aligns. When I say pretty much, we're talking about within 12 inches. It was very difficult to measure the depth, but this footprint of the sunroom is planned, is proposed to be maintained. So whatever the existing footprint was, is going to be maintained. It's just the second or first floor and second floor were extending out about 10 feet.
All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? Let's move to public testimony. I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item. So I will turn it over to Greg, sorry, Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If anyone joining us via Zoom would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. John Graham, I'll be elevating you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. John Graham, if you would please unmute yourself, you may speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The Victorian Society does not support this proposal for rear yard alterations at 2120 45th Avenue, based on the information being presented today. The drawings call for the entire rear wall to be removed. There's no engineer's report stating the reasons for this intervention. They call for the reconstruction of the rear facade at the third floor, but there's no elevation drawing showing the new window openings will match the size and location of the existing openings in this building or the other four houses in this row. There is no mention of salvaging and reusing the historic brick, stone, sorry, brick, stone lintels or stone sills. There are no photos of the existing sills and lintels. And the applicant hasn't provided the dimensions and materials of the existing sills and lintels or of the ones they propose to install. All this material must be provided before an informed determination on appropriateness can be made. We also believe that the new addition is too large in height and depth. It should extend no farther into the rear yard than the rear addition at 2116, the red addition on the drawings, which is the only other building in this row which has been extended into the donut. It should also match the two-story height previously approved at 2116. The adjacent property, which the applicant has referenced, which is the blue addition, 2122, is not part of this row. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HGC finds this rear yard addition inappropriate. As proposed, it is one story too high and the proportion of glass to masonry should be lower. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If there are any other members of the public joining via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I'll note that Queens Community Board Two recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Sure. If I could scroll down to the elevations and the pictures right now. The sills and the precast was to try to emulate what we assume to be there. But if you look at some of the pictures of the existing facade, number one, the 2216, I believe that was referenced, which is this building. The renovation work that they did, they created a penthouse. They raised the roof. As you can see, the roof lines do not match. So I'm not sure what was the reasoning or the historic preservation concerns that was addressed when they raised the roof, as well as added a bulkhead, which you could clearly see from the street. As far as the sill and the lintels, currently there is none that is reflected in any of the existing buildings. It looks like it was formed out of masonry. As far as the brick preservation, yes, we, there is more than enough bricks from the existing rear facade that we could easily reuse to preserve the third floor or reconstruct the third floor. As far as the window location and the size of the windows, we have indicated that the existing size are going to be maintained, as well as the spacing in between. We would have liked to have it more symmetrical, but in terms of the actual spacing that's in this four cluster of homes, we will maintain, including the rebuilt second floor enlargement. As far as the ratio of glass to masonry and what was pointed out, 2216, that really doesn't match the glass to ratio. In fact, our proposal would be more aligned with glass to stucco ratio, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any other questions on this application? All right, I see not. So we're going to move to our discussion and we'll come to our resolution. Commissioner Chen, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So both.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you say?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So this is an application for a three-story rear yard addition, two-story and basement in this historic district, which is one block. And so each of the backyards of the houses that face that street are facing a non-designated context. This particular row has other, two other two-story rear yard additions that were approved by the commission. I think this is the first three-story that we are seeing. And the proposal includes also reconstructing the top floor using salvage brick and matching the window openings. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Lutfi, would you like to start this one? No? Okay. Sorry, okay. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one? Yeah.
This is, I had a hard time with this one last night and then I realized that I was reading the section wrong. So the basement level is extended 20 feet. And then the second and third floor, it was extended 10 feet. And the amount of space seemed almost enormous. So if it was, if it was done according to the rules, it would be two stories, 20 feet, which would already be large.
Right.
And extending it 20 feet plus 10 is too much. So whether he reduces the base to 15 feet or remove the third floor, then it's acceptable in terms of volume.
Okay.
And the facade seems reasonable to me. I didn't see anything wrong with the facade. It's just the volumetric composition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I think I agree with Commissioner Jefferson in either reducing that base or taking a floor off.
Okay. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I would like to see, you know, the, one or the other.
All right. Vice Chair Bland?
Yeah, I guess either or. Definitely leave it to the owner. I think the cumulative effect is clear.
All right. Commissioner Chapin? Commissioner Lutfi, do you want to? Okay. Commissioner Chu?
Agreed, but I also think that I feel like the documentation is incomplete. There's not enough dimensions. And if there's intense intent on keeping the window open is the same as the existing, we've seen this happen before. The dockings need to be cleared to survey and replicate that. I didn't quite understand the response to why the whole facade had to be demolished. The upper floor is being kept where it is, but I assume they're proposing to rebuild it all.
Yeah. Okay. And Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I agree with the other Commissioners.
Okay. So we're not going to take an action today. And what we're going to do is we're going to, I think everybody has agreed that the cumulative effect and the volume is out of scale for this particular building in this particular district and context. And so we're, I think that their commission has, was open to either a two-story addition at this depth or a three-story addition at a shallower depth. So we'll let you work on that and think about that with staff. But in addition, when you come back, we need more documentation on the need to reconstruct the upper floor or floors, as it may be. And I think we need some specific dimensions on the block plans. So we'll ask you to work with the, and dimensions on the window openings and the scale of all the facade elements. So we'll ask you to work with the staff on gathering the rest of that documentation and re-studying your proposal to reduce the amount of volume here in this backyard. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Right, the next item is public hearing item number 10, LPC 24-05964, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 136, Lot 25, 112 and 114 Chamber Street in the Tribeca South Historic District Extension. Two Italianate-style store and loft buildings, built in 1854 and 1857. The application is to combine the buildings, install storefront infill, remove a fire escape and shutters, and construct a rooftop addition.
Look here.
Oh, this will just go back and forth. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Hi. I want to introduce myself. My name is Shu Ming-Tam. I'm an architect. And I'm, today, I'm going to present 112, 114 Chamber Street. What we are doing is a complete renovation facade, facade restoration, and also a one-story addition on the top. Let me see if I can handle this computer here. Okay, so the first drawing is showing where we are. We are located in the Tribeca South Historic District. We are on Chamber Street at the corner of Chamber and Cher Street. Near the corner, I shouldn't say the corner. There are two buildings there. They are both four-story high, brick building with a frontage of about 50 feet. And the lot is about 100 feet back. Oops. I think I have to go back. So this is, the next slide is showing the existing facade on the left have been abandoned. I mean, the application actually was filed back in 2008. And the application was actually approved and with a landmark number 5584 for the record. And we are actually revive the application to want to bring back the work that we want to propose. And the right, the right side is the tax photograph, 1940, showing what the building looked like at that time. Please note that the right side, 114, the second floor, have done some work at that time. We have no record whether it was legally done or, you know, but that contribute to the existing condition. And the first slide is showing basically the storefront have been, after all these years, have been demolished. The bottom showing the roof. One thing about the fire escape is in a very poor condition. That's no way we can restore it back. There are close-up pictures of the windows. They are also very dilapidated and we are going to replace them. And also the keystone on the top, that's part of our facade work. This is an aerial wheel showing where we are in the middle of the tall buildings. The left side is the rear fire escape. Please note that the rear facade actually is visually impossible to be seen from the street because there is a new development behind it. And this is our block diagram showing we are one of the lower building on the block. And this is the drawing of the existing facade. And this is what we are proposing. We're proposing restoration of the brick facade. Restore all the stone. Replace all the windows with the historic profiles. We are putting up new storefronts. And also the addition, we are making it very distinctive. It's different from the existing building. So we are proposing a panel-cladded facade on the top. This is the sort of a side elevation showing how our building fit with the context. And this is a blow-up of the storefront. Basically, we are restoring very much into the traditional details. And we put back all the transom, very similar to what the historic photo is in terms of proportion and scale. And this is the second floor part of 114. We are proposing to restore it back to the same brick, wind, brick material and also the window pattern, similar to the top, actually specifically the third floor, with the four over four pattern. And this is a zoning diagram, which lead us to the proposed addition, which is permitted by zoning. And this is a detail of the addition, which is set back 15 feet from the street, making it invisible across the street. And this is a section joint showing the addition. Please note that the rear facade, we actually set back about a foot from the existing brick facade. This is another section. This is the markup of the roof. This is the pictures of the side photographs with the markups, actually. The markup is very not visible according to this point, visual points. And this is the photo montage of the building with the addition, actually photo montage into the existing photographs. This is another angle. I think this is the furthest angle we can see the building before the corner building sort of brought it off. And this is the picture of the most impactful part. If you can see that addition from the distance. This is leading into the rear facade. This is existing elevation. What we are proposing is clean it up. We will repair the brick and we will paint the brick. And we are keeping the shutters on the top floor as a historic reference. The top addition, we are going to set it back about a foot. This is the detail of the shutters we are proposing. We are proposed to replicate the shutters because the existing shutters are really in a condition we cannot restore. These are the background joints showing what we are proposing. We are proposing restore back the first floor into retail commercial space, upper floors into apartments. Please note that because we are drawing two buildings, we are putting the elevator and the stair to meet the building codes. And the two buildings, actually, they are not on the same level. So the elevator actually give access to both sides for handicap, handicap requirements. And the top floor, the drawing on the bottom showing our proposed fifth floor, which is the new addition with the 15-foot setback. And we are proposing on the roof, we have all the mechanical equipment set back from the front so that cannot be seen from the street level. And there are other items on the appendix. We don't have to show it.
So if we have questions about the details, we may ask you to go to the drawings.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have a question. The western building right now, and in the historic photo from 1940, had a storefront system. You're proposing to replace it with a masonry wall. Is there any historic basis for that?
No, there's no historic base for that storefront. No, there's no historic base uh for that's the uh, uh storefront. But I think based on my understanding at during the forties, I think there's a thriving uh, uh, com- commercial activity along Chamber Street. And shoe is, shoe store are the major uh component of that com- commercial activity. And I think at that time, the owner of the building probably want to make the second floor part of the showroom for the store. So that's no historic reference to where that storefront coming from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jefferson and then followed by Commissioner Chu.
LPC ten.
Ten? Let me see if I can move back.
So on the storefront level, since you're, you're, it's all creative, you're making this up, right?
Yes.
This is all made up.
Right. This is uh, we basically have no storefront uh reference, yeah.
And you're making your building almost symmetrical, completely symmetrical, right? Your whole building is symmetrical.
Let me move back.
Why the left-hand side so different from the, the right-hand side different from the left-hand side? What, what were the reason for that?
You mean for the storefront design?
Yeah, the window, the windows and the whole.
Basically, they are not really symmetrical. Uh, the storefront design is based on the floor plan, how it uh function. Uh, the building on the right, one fourteen, the entrance, we show a num- number there. One twelve to one fourteen, right? Let me go back to the storefront again. That is the major entrance for our residential apartments.
Oh, sick.
But in terms of the height of the storefront, are you working with what you can understand to be the original height of the opening?
Exactly. Let me, let me show you the historic fake picture again. I don't know any way we can blow it up or, no? Yeah, the, the two buildings is have a little bit different. Uh, I noticed on one fourteen, they have a higher uh, uh, uh transom. They have a transom. That means they, they are a little bit higher on the right side. And the left side is a little bit lower. So the door doesn't have a transom above. The right-hand side, actually there's a transom above the doors.
So, so, so my question is, is rather simple. If you go back to LPC zero nine. Okay, okay, okay. So the le- the right-hand side portion is based on the function of your lobby, right? That whole design is based on function of the lobby.
What?
And the right-hand side is based on the function of the lobby, not the symmetry of the building, right?
No, have nothing to do with the symmetry.
Okay, thanks.
Question is related to that. It's, it's what I'm obviously saying is we're replacing the second floor, which goes to historic expression completely. I mean, it looked like in the story photo that the ground floor was stored on extended up to the second floor. That was one aesthetic, which made them very different. They're still very different, but it made a very difference. And in, in, in that second floor matched a similar one on the building to the right, particularly historic picture. Those were identical at that level, at that level of second floor. If I'm just questioning removal with that brachery and why you're probably just assuming that's okay. I think that that's giving the biggest key for what was below. And that was one assembly. It looked like it was cast iron.
Uh, the, uh, I'm sorry, the storefront actually on the top part is not cast iron. It's a wood, the cladding.
The surround is wood?
Yeah, all surround is wood. Only the edge where that column is, is cast iron.
All of this cast part?
Yeah.
I could just note a couple of thing about the, a couple of things about the storefronts as well. I mean, what we see in the tax photo from the forties isn't really just a snapshot in time. And staff believes uh very confidently that there's no historic, original infill presenting in the forties tax photo. There's later historic storefronts, so you all can judge for yourselves if they're significant features. But um even the second-story storefront at one fourteen, as Commissioner Chu, as you pointed out, it matches the one to the building further west, and those are entirely different buildings. Um, and given the age of both of those, again, staff believes those are not original uh second-story storefronts. They came in later. I don't know the exact date. Yeah, so I think everything even. Exactly. And there are some cast iron columns remaining behind some of the later cladding even today that I think the applicant intends to expose. So you're really seeing a lot of layering of uh later alterations. Correct.
What, what about the uh fire uh escapes? Are they original or?
I mean, the, the fire escape at one twelve does look like it could be an original fire escape, although not likely original to the building. But the first one that came in once fire escape started to be installed uh for, for safety reasons throughout the, the district. Um, but I'll also note that as the applicant pointed out, there was a commo- prior commission approval in oh seven or oh eight. And that approval did uh include removing that fire escape just as background.
Okay, and Commissioner Master?
Yeah, that was my question, Corey. Can you um tell us what the differences are between the previously approved and then this presentation?
Yeah, I only have the text from that permit to go by. We weren't able to get the presentation itself. But I think that for the fire escape, the justification was that uh it also cut through the historic cornice, as you can see here. So part of removing it would help repair some of the damage done to the facade, but also allow the cornice to be uh restored. And there was a rooftop addition that was described as being minimally visible that was approved uh at that time as well, but I don't know what it looks like.
Did, did that approval include removing the second-floor storefront?
That wasn't part of the application from what I could ascertain. But the storefront and throughout the ground floors was approved with something different at that time.
Other questions? Okay, let's take public testimony and we may have more questions after that. And I'll note again that there was no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. John Graham, I'll be elevating you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Good afternoon, Commissioners John Graham for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society does not support many or most of the proposed changes to these adjacent buildings. The overall design philosophy here seems incorrect. These buildings were put up by two different builders, one in eighteen fifty-four, the other in eighteen fifty-seven. Unfortunately, the applicant seems to have made the decision to ignore this and make them look as similar as possible. At the ground floor of one twelve, the two cast iron colonnets would be retained. However, the large blank sign panel, surely not original, causes the proportions of the new storefront to be awkward and incorrect for an eighteen fifty-four building. There are many well-proportioned historic storefronts in this district. Beyond that, a full building renovation like this demands that a stylistically appropriate Italianate-era storefront be considered. There are many exact, extent, examples. Historic, historic fire escapes are a significant feature added to buildings built before the Triangle Shirtwaist Fire in nineteen eleven. They are character-defining features of this district. This fire escape has decorative elements and should be retained. At one fourteen, the proposal would remove the display window, which is called out in the designation report as an historic second-story wood and glass show window. The report notes that it's been altered, but there is significant historic material here, including what may be original pivot windows. The second-floor show window should remain in place and be restored. Painted features of the two facades should be differentiated by color unless a paint analysis reveals they were the same. In fact, a paint analysis should be standard procedure for a renovation of this scope. At the rear facade, there are many historic cast iron shutters still in place. The applicant is proposing to remove all of them and presumably destroy them. This is unacceptable. New replica shutters at the new window openings at the rooftop addition are no substitute. The existing shutters should be restored and retained in place. Finally, the handrails at the rooftop addition need to be shown in the building sections onboard LPC fifteen. They are shown in the mockup. They will be visible. The design should be significantly revised before a vote is taken. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have Lucy Levine.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Historics Council. HDC appreciates that this project will create eight units of housing. We also appreciate that the approach to the second and third uh floor windows on the front facade is largely restorative. We believe that the applicant should carry that impulse further in order to retain and restore the second-floor commercial loft facade at one fourteen chambers. At one twelve, we think the fire escape was a design component of the building and should be restored and maintained. Further, we feel the storefront requires further study, and we suggest the applicant look to Italianate-style storefront precedence. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If any other members of the public would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do you like to respond to the comments we've heard? There you are.
Uh, we actually have considered, make a lot of consideration for the comments before, uh, with the help of Fred. Uh, it show us, uh, you know, there are some concern. Uh, regarding the second-floor show window, my personally feel that it is not a landmark. There was no landmark at nineteen forty. You know, you are up to you to do whatever you, you know, you want. And uh, we could end up the building look like one ten Chamber Street, which is actually a stone, cladding with a stone with an arch and all this type of thing. And I don't feel that we strongly should follow that. And also the function of second floor is totally different. It's not a showroom. It's not to show shoes and merchandise. It's going to be a residential apartment. And uh, we believe when the building was first built, the second floor is not designed like that by any architect who is logically, you know, to do that. And actually, at that stage of the history, we don't have long steel beams like that. So structurally, it's impossible for any historic building to look like this. Your technology is simply not there. So uh, in terms of the fire escape, uh, I think one of the commissioner point out, because of that fire escape, actually cut the top corners into pieces. And uh definitely it's not the intended element. You know, the, the historic uh, committee would appreciate that. And that fire escape is in such a poor condition. It's no way we can restore it. Then we will end up with replicating it with some crazy modern elements and it would not even match whatever is there. So in terms of the storefront, uh, you know, we are trying to replicate as much as we can for the, you know, existing storefront based on the uh tax photo of the first floor. And uh, we don't even know if that is the storefront back in eighteen fifties. And there's no way for us to, you know, rely on any of just a existing tax uh, uh photo and say that is the way we should go, you know? So that's, that's my comment. I, the owner is here and I uh, don't know if uh you want to say something.
Okay, and, and just one last question for you.
Yes.
The owner speaks. Are the storefronts wood or metal?
Wood.
All right, would the owner like to say anything?
Thank you Commissioners for your time. I just want to address, I know the second story on one fourteen Chamber Street. Um, but I know in your own designation itself, I mean, I understand that it was part of the historic photo. Um, but in your own designation, you say a significant, significant alteration was that this was um uh, the, in the late twentieth century, there was a storefront alteration. So that's really not even the original historic um, um, windows itself. Um, originally, the building was, in your designation, a residential building. And at some point, it had been converted into commercial use, which is why you had that second-story look. So we would like to, since we are um converting this to residential, we would like to be able to restore it back to what it was traditionally, historically truly was. Um, and also um with respect to the fire escape and the original application that had been approved um by all of you, we were um permitted to remove that fire escape. I do think that it adds an element. It's just, it's, it's um, as my architect um adequately said and eloquently said, I think it just doesn't, there's a cut in the top which we want to try to restore. Um, and also I think one of the um comments made was about paint samples, and we have done paint samples of um what was there originally, which we hoped, we, we will try to adhere to as to what the original color was. So I thank you for your time and attention. We as owners really, as you can see, would love to be able to get this back um into looking um, uh, like the nicest building on the block.
Oh, thank you. Okay, any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's move to close the hearing and start our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Letfy, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to be reviewing this application. There are a number of components to evaluate. One is at the ground floor, there's new storefront infill. Think that the applicant is restoring the openings to their original sizes, but um the infill and the cladding is to be discussed at the second floor of um one fourteen. Um, the proposal is to remove that uh early twentieth-century storefront and to ins- uh re- to create a masonry wall with uh punched window openings. Um, the proposal also includes the removal of the fire escape and the one-story penthouse and the removal of shutters on the rear facade. And uh, as was mentioned, there is a previous approval that by the commission that approved the removal of the fire escape and different storefront alterations and at the ground floor and a different rooftop addition. So we'll begin our discussion. So there's one, two, three, four, five components. Commissioner Ginsburg?
Okay. So before I go into any specifics, I want to talk a little about general. These two buildings are different buildings with a somewhat different character. And I think in the renovation, you're trying to make them look like one building, and they should look like two buildings. And so I'm going to go through my comments related to that, but as an overlying theme. Uh, so let me start with the second-floor show windows on the right building. Uh, I want to keep, I think we should keep them. Uh, I understand that way back when, there may have been something different there, but we have no documentation of what it is. And this show window is historic for at least eighty years, represents what we know was a sort of historic roof uh use. And it may, how much of it can be repaired versus replaced is something you need to figure out. But I would keep that window. The next issue is the fire escape. Where I would keep the baskets. You can get rid of the ladders. If it's structurally unsound, then again, you can replace that. Those two things are going to make these buildings look different, more like they looked historically. I think some of the details on the storefront need to be worked out. That could be done with staff. I think the rooftop addition is fine. And is there anything else I need to talk about?
The shutters at the rear facade. I'm not sure we actually.
Right, and?
Yeah, so there, there are uh fire shutters, um, you know, deteriorated condition, but throughout, I think the remaining upper floors of the rear facade. Um, the applicants are proposing to remove those, but they do want to install new ones at the top floor only. That shows up on one of the other issues.
Right, okay. Uh, I think. Right, okay. Uh, I think if the existing shutters are deteriorated, they should be replaced, not just on the top floor. Uh, but if they're deteriorated, replacement is fine.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, let's uh, start with the obvious, the uh, fire escape. I think the, the, the commission has a history of removing them. Uh, and we do uh, in some instances, do ask the basket to be uh, retained. And so that, that is an easy one. And I, I do agree that the um, the corners will look a lot more uh, whole um, and integral, uh, if it's a continuous corners rather than being cut. Uh, I have no problem with the, the rooftop addition. And I think the rear shutter, um, uh, I think what they're proposing is accurate. Uh, if it's in a deteriorate rusty condition and they're gonna replace it with, I think, to remind of the historic presence of it. Um, the second floor on the right-hand side building, that is a, a, a call for the commission. I, 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 I don't know which way to read it because obviously, originally it was a residential building. And obviously, residential building had a different uh, fenestration pattern than the current um, for the last, as Commissioner Ginsburg said, for the last eighty years. And uh, and so um, that is, to me, is if you want to retain it and still maintain the residential look, how, what would the design look like? Um, but uh, I do agree the storefront on the base, uh, the two separate buildings should work closely with the staff uh, to articulate the, the, uh, enhance the profiles, the, the detailing. And that will really bring back, I mean, I'm looking forward to, to the removing all the graffiti and all the um, things like that. I think that that would be a good start.
Okay, great. And just to be clear, the building was built as a store and loft building, so it wasn't built as a residential building, but it did have uh, you know, many of them did have punched window openings above the storefront. Vice Chair Bland?
Um, I think so. Let's hope I could remember them all. Um, first of all, the, the storefronts, um, I think they're you know, generally in the right direction, but just need refinement, working closely with staff to get that right. Um, I'm not a fan of falling down uh, fire escapes. They don't romanticize me. Uh, I wouldn't vote against it because everybody else wants them. And if we can remove the ladders and keep the baskets, I guess that's better than, but I would take them all away, frankly. I don't, I don't think they weren't there originally. The, the shutters in the back, wasn't sure I fully understood that. I, I think there's some that are gonna be removed that are original and some that are being, the new ones at the top floor. I, I.
They're gonna be replaced with new ones to match.
To match, okay. I guess I'm all right with that then. Um, where am I? Four or five? Now, the fifth, the, the big window. Uh, I see no preservation purpose in leaving what was an alteration, even though it's been there a long time, and seeing draperies behind it because it's gonna be a residential. I just don't, I mean, that's what's gonna happen and I think it's gonna be bizarre. Um, so I, I would vote for, for what's there. And I guess that puts me in alignment with the community board, which voted to approve it as is.
And, and the rooftop addition, which has a little bit of it's available. Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I'm fine with the rooftop addition. Um, I'm okay with uh, just the top floor shutters as a memorial to what was there originally. I think that's okay. I think they've done a, a fairly good job of actually separating the buildings compared to some of the other proposals we had because the cornices are different. The storefront elevations are quite different, uh, in terms of, you know, their top bands and, you know, proportions. And the windows on both sides give the perception that you have different floors really almost. So I think in general, that, that's, that's pretty well done actually from my perspective. I was thinking also about uh, preserving the uh, baskets and the fire escapes because these are more ornate than usual. Uh, they're not as ornate as some, but they're, they're not just your standard fire escape. Um, and I, I wouldn't think that they should not have to preserve more than the basket certainly, but I think that the baskets uh, you know, can add something to the building and does help as uh, as another commissioner suggested, uh, you know, to create a difference between the two buildings, which is a small one, you know, decorative uh, thing. So um, I think they, they can add a little bit to the building and um, and preserve a, a historic feature. Uh, let's see, is there anything else? I, oh, I don't see any. I agree with Fred. I don't see any need to keep uh, an alternate to, you know, design that occurred. Uh, you know, generally, the first two floors, we allow a lot of latitude uh, for, you know, um, building design. So I, I, I think it's okay to, to do what they've done in this case.
Okay. Commissioner Letfy?
Um, so first, I think it's great that, that these two buildings are gonna be cleaned up. It just so happens that they are now, except at the base, going to be residential. So, I do believe there is a need to visually unify them in some way. And the, and fortunately though, there are some differences in the building that even though they're unified, you know, the facade looks a little quirky because the size of the windows are different. So it's wonderful that they've gone down to the brick and clea- and clear them up. The windows are gonna be replaced. I, you know, the cornice is gonna be uh, repaired. Uh, I think it's, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with taking off the fire escapes. I don't see a necessity of keeping them. They're not particularly beautiful and they don't serve a purpose. I don't think that uh, storefronts on uh, the building to the right was historic or added anything visually. Unless the uh, unless the applicant wanted a design element to uh, add to the building, but I don't see why that's necessary. I think I appreciate the fact that they're cleaning up the rear facade and that they're gonna retain make a gesture to retain um, some of the uh, shutters, the historic shutters, and then replace the others so that they match. I think the top of the building works well.
They're gonna remove the deteriorated shutters and only replace them at the top floor.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I got it mixed up. Yeah. And um, I think the top of the building works well. And it's, you know, if you move to the, when I look at the bottom of the building, um, the storefronts, uh, they, they need more of refinement. I think that's right. But if you go to the next page and look at what's going on at the street level, um, it's really an incredible hodgepodge. So um, whatever, working with staff, whatever um, is developed, I think will be a little bit of a re-imagination of what might have been there. And I'm okay with that, as long as the details work.
Did I forget anything? I think you got everything. Okay. Commissioner Chu?
Okay. Just wanna make this quick. I think that the addition, the rooftop is acceptable. I think the rear facade approach of retaining the shutters at the top floor, um, I'm okay with. I'm also okay with removing the fire escape, um, uh, mostly because I think it will bring back the full cornice. Um, if the commission decides to keep the baskets, I, I'm okay with that. If they were all removed, I would be okay with it. Um, let's see. The second floor, uh, um, storefront expression, um, I do realize was in a later addition. I could approve what's being proposed. I prefer some remnant of that, but my bigger concern is the current proposals putting new brick to replicate the existing brick. And I don't want to see a second floor that's a different colored brick. That's what's gonna happen. It'll look like an infill and that I find very concerning. Oh. I'd rather work with the frame of, of the masonry that's not there and infill it. And I think it may come out as a better design. Um, so, again, I'm okay with the change of the facade. I'm concerned about the reality of what it, what it means.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then did you comment on the storefronts at the ground?
Oh, at the storefront, I do agree with um, the other commissioners in that it seems to lack some documentation and detail. Again, what I want to make sure is that it, it has the weight and presence that the historic storefronts did and not too thin, light, and, and, and um, not substantial enough members. That's, that's my concern.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master?
Yeah, so church and chambers. This is uh, where my bus gets off when I come here in the morning. So I'm very happy that we're um, taking this dilapidated storefront and renovating it. Um, very exciting. Um, so, the rooftop addition is fine. Um, the changes in the rear facade are fine. Um, I'm fine with removing the fire escape as well as the baskets. Um, I'm fine with the second floor, um, uh, storefront being replaced with the brick, um, because it will be a residential. Um, so I view this as an adaptive, you know, reuse and I think it's just a lot more practical. Um, my only comment is that the storefront infill, um, I think they should work with staff to refine the details, but other than that, I find this appropriate.
Right. Commissioner Jefferson?
I, I, I can see this project two ways. I could see it with the the second floor, keeping the fabric it has. But I'm leaning more to keeping what they have. Because actually, it's two buildings. The proportions are all different. The windows are different than A and B. And it, it's distinguished enough to say they're two separate buildings. Since you don't see the roof, you don't see that symmetry. We don't see the penthouse. You don't see the symmetry of that. So that's not visible. The ground floor, you know, it was, at one point, I thought they should be similar. But, you know, if, if the, if the architect is looking at it purely as function and one looks one way and the other one looks slightly different, but they're all the same color, it's fine with me. I think these, the, the fire escape, please remove it. Patch the, patch the uh, the corners, all that stuff, no. So I can approve this.
Okay. All right. And you're comfortable with the plan for the shutters on the rear facade? Okay, so I think we actually have enough Commissioners already with um, who can really support this application with the condition that they work with the staff to refine the details of the storefront. Um, there are some Commissioners who suggested retaining the baskets of the fire escape, but we do have six for uh, the removal. Um, and, you know, the one thing that I think i- is we're sort of mixed on um, the second floor. The majority of the Commissioners are fine with the approach on the second floor, but as Commissioner Chu pointed out, there's a question about the brick and how well it will match. And so I wonder if we should get a little more documentation on that or sample, or do we think we can do that in the field?
We do a lot with it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I, you know, it, it has nineteenth century pressed brick. That's not an easy thing to come by. You know, a, a new brick is not going to have the exact same finish, even though the size and color may be very close. I mean, that being said, these facades are both painted now and have been for a long time. It could be that a mineral stain like we've seen on other recent projects could tie everything together nicely if that turned out to be the case on one fourteen. But on one twelve, it could be stripped and exposed since there's no other changes there. So I think there are ways to, to work with that, understanding though, it, it may be true that a perfect match can't be found for the, the brick at one fourteen.
I think the point is just that we're, we want to ensure that there's an approach or strategy so that the, the intent is the homogeneous reading of the brick facade. That's what we're looking for, not see the whole floor of a different color brick. That might help.
Okay. All right. So why don't I make this motion? I think as Commissioner Ginsburg, you had some more concerns. Um, and I, I think we have six to do this. Okay, so in the matter of docket number twenty-four dash zero five nine six four, one twelve to one fourteen Chamber Street in the Tribeca South Historic District Extension, two Italianate store and loft buildings built in eighteen fifty-four and eighteen fifty-seven. This is an application to combine buildings, install storefront infill, remove a fire escape and shutters, and construct a rooftop addition. And I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Tribeca South Historic District Extension Two. I also note that the show window installed at the second floor of one fourteen Chamber Street was a later addition. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the removal of any modern ground for ground floor storefront infill and accretions will eliminate unsympathetic, unsympathetic alterations that detract from the significant features, architectural features of the building without causing the removal of any historic fabric. That the removal of the second story commercial show window and the installation of punched windows with profiled cast stone lintels at one fourteen Chamber Street will restore the size of the original openings, return the facade closer to its historic appearance, and create a harmonious relationship to its neighbor at one twelve Chamber Street and other buildings of similar scale in the historic district. That the fire escape stairs and drop ladder are utilitarian in character and are not sufficiently decorative to contribute to the architectural significance of the building. And their removal will allow a missing piece of the historic cornice to be restored and the facade repaired. That the rear fire shutters are not visible from a public, from any public thoroughfares and the removal of deteriorated fire shutters below the third floor and the relocation of relocation of sound shutters or new shutters will ensure retention of historic, significant historic fabric. That the paint, proposed storefronts composed of dark gray painted metal cladding, transoms, display windows, panel bulkheads, and doors will be in keeping with historic storefront infill found at buildings of this style, type, and age in terms of general configuration proportions, material, finish, and details. And the inclusion of an integrated metal sign band will hide an existing dropped soffit condition and provide the base of the building with an area for signage. That any remaining historic cast iron piers will be integrated into the design. That the proposed metal clad rooftop addition, bulkhead, and metal railings, which will be visible along chambers and church streets, will be in keeping with typical utilitarian rooftop accretions in this historic district and will not call undue attention to themselves in the roofscape. And that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the historic district. However, um, the details of the storefronts do not sufficiently recall the profiles and details of historic storefront buildings, storefronts found on buildings of this age and style. And I recommend, therefore, I recommend that the profiles and details of the storefronts be refined in consultation with the staff. And that, as always, the staff reviews but, and approves the final brick selection to ensure that the brick is a sufficient match and allows the upper floors to read as continuous, have a continuous appearance. All right. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Clark?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Mr. Chapin?
Aye.
Mr. Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Letfy?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and one opposed, the motion passed.
Aye. That's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next item.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearing item number eleven, LPC twenty-five dash zero four three nine one. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block five twenty-six, lot forty-four, seventy-four McDougal Street in the McDou- McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. This is a Greek revival style house built in eighteen forty-four and later altered with neo-federal style elements in nineteen twenty by Francis Y. Jones and Maxwell Hyde. The application is constructive rooftop addition and modified Y. Jones and Maxwell Hyde. The application is constructive rooftop addition and modify openings at the rear facade.
Hello, my name is Mark Barak. I'm a principal of DTLS Architecture. I'm here with my colleague Alicia and the owner of the project, Brian Sisney. Um, let's get into the presentation. There we go. The project is located at 74 McDougal. And we're proposing a rooftop addition and changes to the rear opening. It's important that before we get into the presentation, that you get some context about where this building is located. It's in the southwest corner of uh, the McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. So when we're looking at this building, you kind of have to think about it three ways. One is when you're north on McDougal Street, when you're standing within the historic district. Second is when you're south of the historic district, close to Houston Street. And last, when you're in the common yard, what makes this space so unique is that there's a series of brownstones on McDougal and Sullivan Street that share a common yard. But keeping that in mind, our property is the furthest southernmost in that district. These images kind of illustrate where these views are taken. So with image A, you're seeing it from the northern portion of McDougal Street. B is the absolute southernmost point of McDougal Street while you're still in the district. And then once you step outside, there's a single floor rear addition to the buildings that are along Houston Street. So you get a clear view of the south facade. The building was built in 1844 Greek revival, but similar to a lot of the houses along McDougal Street, it was altered with some new Federalist details. And the house has sort of an eclectic feel, just like some of the other brownstones along McDougal. The rear of the house has a dedicated backyard, but when you're standing in the backyard, you can start to see what some of the other buildings along the common yard have done, such as enlarging the rear opening, adding Juliet balconies, making rooftop bulkhead additions or changing the way that guardrails are configured. Here's some images of the roof as it currently stands. You have an unobstructed view to the south and the west, but what's most important is that when you're standing on the roof, you do not see any of McDougal Street nor Sullivan Street. And I think that's important to keep in mind that it's not visible at all within the defined area of the historic district. The existing front facade is four stories, but what's interesting is that it travels downward towards the rear. So when you look at it from south view, you can see that the slope of the roof is also followed by the parapet. Currently, the parapet steps down towards the rear and we'll be addressing that in our design. Historically, the house has gone through a number of different iterations. Even as recently as 15 years ago, the brick was painted a different color. And that's also evident in a lot of the other homes up and down McDougal Street where people have had some creative control over the coloring of the brick. The main part of our proposal involves adding a rooftop addition. We've been working with our Landmark staff to make something that's sensitive to the historical context of the neighborhood. And we've also made alterations based on our discussions with landmarks and preparation for a community board. Most significantly, we altered the path of the required fire department access to put it on the north side so that any potential guardrails would not be as visible from the street. We also worked on the southern portion of the addition by adding windows to break up the massing of the brick. Looking at the original section versus our proposed section, you can see that our rooftop addition is trying to honor the slope of the existing roof line. And we're also picking up on cues of hiding the air handlers and also stepping down towards the rear terrace. Most importantly, there's a small step that's going to be taken right as you leave the um, proposed addition. And we did that so that it would be able to reduce the height of the guardrail on the rear. And we also stepped that guardrail back by one foot, so it'd be less visible from the common yard. Looking at our sightline studies, you can see that none of the mechanical equipment nor the bulkhead is viewable from within the McDougal Street corridor. You have to leave the historic district and go 300 feet to the west to Sixth Avenue before you can start to see some of the addition. In this situation, all of the mechanical equipment would be concealed by the front parapet, but you would start to see the actual addition poking out. You'll see, once we built the mockups, that it can clearly be illustrated throughout our photos. We built a full-scale mockup of the parapet, the addition and the mechanical equipment. This is looking at the proposed bulkhead addition from both the west side and the east side. Also, this shows you our proposal for the rear guardrail and what we plan to do with the mechanical equipment that's going to be placed on the north side of the building. As you can see, immediately to the north, the neighboring building has an even larger set of mechanical equipment, none of which is visible from the street. Looking at the same photos that we started with, when you're standing within the historic district, none of the mockup that we prepared is visible. It's only once you travel to the south of the historic district and you start making your way closer to Houston Street, that the bulkhead becomes more evident. In the rear, you can see both the guardrail and the proposed addition, but that's actually adding to some of the existing fabric of the rear court because a lot of other homes have already started making such interventions, whether it's Juliet balconies or adding differences in bulkheads or guardrails. Since the historic district spans two streets, we wanted to confirm that the proposed addition wouldn't be viewable from Sullivan Street. This is the only gap between the brownstones along Sullivan Street and the mockup wasn't visible. Then we wanted to show how this would look when you're outside of the historic district looking in. As soon as you start to travel to the south, even before you get to the actual corner on Houston Street, you can see the proposed addition. Then, once you cross Houston Street, you start to see the changes to the uh, parapet along the south side. As you start walking to the west, you can see the addition becomes more evident. And that's because there's just less obstructions. There's a large playing field across the street and also the width of Houston Street, which allows for direct sightlines into the historic neighborhood. This image just shows the view from Sixth Avenue when you're looking across the playing field. And then you can see a clear view of the front facade with the proposed addition. And we were mindful of this since we realized that this is a unique building that's really the furthest southernmost visible. So we thought about that while we were working on the design details for the proposed bulkhead addition. What we wanted to do was create an addition that didn't look like a foreign object for the neighborhood. Instead, we wanted to pick up on the cues of our building and the historic district in general. What we did was we create a proposal that's a brick clad bulkhead, matching window and mullion sizing, adding lintels on top of the windows and the door openings, and also making sure that any of the cornice detailing would have a similar scale and proportion to what's already existing in the neighborhood. On the south facade, rather than having it look like a monotonous piece of brick, we added four windows that matched the scale and proportion of the front and rear facade and a common lintel above to make it further reinforce the language that was existing in the neighborhood. Walking through the common yard, this is an example of some of the other buildings that have built bulkhead additions. One thing we noticed is that very few attempted to have contextuality to them. And that's because a lot of these have no visibility from the street, simply because they're further up in the district. So we took it upon ourselves to do a design that would look more traditional and more in keeping with the neighborhood in general. Just to give you a diagram of other homes that have built these additions, you'll see that most of them are on the northern side of the property. So they don't have all the sightline issues that we do on the southern portion. But it also gives you a clear view of how they took different design approaches, including going with larger panels of glass, no mullions and more modern aesthetics. On the Sullivan side, they have existing bulkheads and recently approved bulkheads from landmarks which haven't been constructed yet. But this gives you an idea of the language that they were folding in for recently approved designs. Diving into the details of our bulkhead, it was really important to make it look like an extension of the existing building. And in doing so, we plan to not only have the entire facade matching with the window typologies of using Marvin Ultimate, but also that the brick would be colored and painted to match the rest of the building. Another portion of our proposal is the leveling out of the parapet. This is a condition that can be viewed in other brownstones along the historic district. And in these examples, you can see where the parapet was brought up to a level height. And then the last part of our proposal to discuss are our changes to the rear facade. There is an existing vocabulary of larger openings and balconies and Juliet balconies along the common yard. We wanted to pick up on that theme when we were working on our parlor level. The major modifications will be happening solely on the parlor level. We're proposing a bi-fold door and a rear deck with stairs that'll go to the rear yard. The intention for this is to create something that looks more organic to the overall building neighborhood, but also give us more light facing the common yard since that's a major design feature in the area. As I mentioned, this will all be Marvin Ultimate and it'll be a wood exterior facade with mullion spacing and designed to match the original. We are proposing to replace all of the windows in the building using Marvin Ultimate as well as looking at historic photos to make sure that the scale and proportion matches what was indigenous to the property. The last item to discuss is proposed guardrails for the rear deck and the roof. We propose a simple square iron balustrade in the thoughts that it won't distract from the rest of the building and in keeping with the actual nature of the space. And we wanted to say thank you guys for letting us propose and um, we're looking forward to having a discussion.
Great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I have a few questions. First of all, what is the height of the rooftop addition?
It's 10 feet.
Okay, and so what the interior clear height is?
It's going to be about eight and a half feet. Once you subtract insulation, waterproofing and the structure itself.
The other thing with the rooftop addition is I presume you located the stairs where they are because that's where they are below.
Correct.
They're not full set of plans, but that seemed to be the section. So the roof over that stair could be sloped because you, I think only need a six, eight, but let's say seven foot clear height at the stair. So for most of that uh, southern wall, you could lower that.
Um, we absolutely could. And working with our landmarks rep, we did start to explore the idea of either having an angled piece where we could do a skylight feature. The um, reason why we ultimately decided to keep the parapet going vertically was since we wanted to level the parapet in the first place to make a guardrail for the rear deck. We thought that we could just continue that language vertically to make it look a little bit more organic.
And then finally, are you changing the color of the building when you painted?
The building has been painted over the years and it was discussed that this would be a staff level discussion where we would be painting the entire building on all three visible facades to match the front facade.
Okay, thank you.
And just to be clear, we normally don't approve painting masonry that hasn't been painted at staff level. Um, or if it has been painted, the staff can approve painting it to match underlying color in this particular historic district. Historically, they were painted a variety of colors and the staff uh, approval would reflect or be based on that.
Sorry to go back. I just wanted to pick up on your question about that. Um, in the 1940s, it hadn't been painted, but um, it was repainted as recently as 15 years ago.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Chu?
You showed an elevation rendering of uh, I guess the south facade, the party wall.
Mm-hmm.
The rooftop addition. Did you, was there a rendering of a perspective view from the street?
No, but we could easily add one if you wanted. Everything's built in 3D.
Okay, but there is not one in here that I'm just missing.
No.
Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
Yeah. Um, I think you've sort of talked around this, but a little bit more maybe on your decision to treat this as an extension of the base building, color, materials, straight up on that wall as opposed to what we normally see here, which is um, you know, and uh, what am I trying to say? A bulkhead. You know, it was different material setback, et cetera, et cetera. Well, just, I mean, I was captivated by your, the elegance of your presentation, but I just would like to hear a little bit more about.
No, I think it's a really valid conversation to have. Um, especially when you look at all the other bulkheads within the historic district. They do seem like a foreign design element that was placed on top of the building. We had definitely discussed that with our client, but it was decided that due to the prominence of this lot being on the southwest corner, that trying to do anything that would be foreign would actually detract from the historical nature of that area. So rather than trying to do something that was larger panels of glass, we're doing a different cladding. We realized that it would be better just to make it look like an extension of the building. And also, we felt that it enhances the neighborhood by making it look like it was more part of it rather than having somebody look in and say, well, there's a few variations within the historic district. So we felt it was sort of our duty and obligation.
Not to pursue it too much as a conversation back and forth, but I mean, it does now make you look at it. I mean, it's like a thing to look at. It's, it's maybe a very elegant thing to look at, but nonetheless, it's a thing to look at as opposed to just another bulkhead on just another brownstone or, or roof in, you know, countless, countless, countless neighborhoods in New York. Uh, so it does demand that we now look at it and appreciate it as a piece of architecture as opposed to, as you say, just an alien thing like all those other um, um, things that are on, on roofs to get you up to, up to a roof. Anyway, I'm talking to myself.
All right, yes, Commissioner Chu?
As Fred mentioned, I, so I understand the proposal that, that orange mockup is the brick of the addition on the roof.
Mm-hmm.
And the rendering suggests that you're mashing the brick of the party wall. What is, are you redoing the party wall when it's painted and?
The party wall is actually having to get rebuilt just due to some emergency structural issues. So we're re-pointing and re-bricking a lot of it.
So a lot of the brick finish is going to be replaced on them?
Without a doubt. And that's why, working with our staff member, we're proposing repainting anyway. Yeah. So the um, the wall right now, since there's no building to the south.
Yeah.
Just over time, it started to bow to the south just because there was no lateral support on the upper floors. So um, we already have gotten an emergency approval through landmarks to start to rebuild some of that brick, but it's not the entire piece. It's really localized to each portion which needs it.
Hmm.
Um, we also are very conscious of the fact that what is the actual definition of a historic neighborhood? And we do believe it's not just when you're physically setting foot in it. It's to make sure that the historic neighborhood has representation when you're standing outside of it. And that helped us with our design approach so that even if you're standing on Houston, which isn't defined as a historic district, that it would have an appeal when people are looking in. And that was definitely what guided us on some of these scale and proportion issues.
Yes, Corey?
Mark, could you just clarify about the party wall? Just because I, I believe our understanding of the prior permit issued was a sort of a select corner of that wall was being reconstructed, not the entire thing.
Yes, and thank you for asking. It's not the entire portion. It's just portions where the pillowing and the bowing was too severe. But it's definitely more individualized based on specific parts.
And then the wa- the side wall will be painted in neutral color and
Correct.
whatever is not window on the addition would match?
Correct. So our intention is to just um, reinforce the paint that's on the front facade and wrap the side and the rear.
All right, other questions? All right, let's take public testimony and we'll come back to you. And I'll note that there is no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom, please use the raise hand function. If you would like to speak, our first speaker will be Chloe Gregoire. Uh, Chloe, I'll be elevating you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good day, Commissioners. My name is Chloe Gregoire and I'm speaking on behalf of Village Preservation.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Village Preservation finds this rooftop addition to be too visible. The addition needs to be set back from the south facade, so that the visibility is eliminated from the viewpoint looking directly over the secondary facade on McDougal Street and significantly reduced as it is viewed from further south. This building is uniquely positioned at the end of the McDougal Row and at the edge of the McDougal Sullivan Gardens Historic District. And a highly visible addition over the side facade would alter one's perception of the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Up next, we will have John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. We will address two aspects of this proposal, the rooftop addition and the rear facade alteration. Regarding the rooftop, this small addition is problematic only because of the one-story building next door. This causes the side wall to be highly visible. We believe the inappropriately intrusive effect of the addition would be considerably reduced by eliminating the windows in the lotline wall. Instead, it should be a simple extension of the building's brick side wall. It hardly seems that additional light is needed for this small room that has windows front and back. Skylights could provide this extra light if desired. The proposed change to the rear facade is perhaps even more problematic. McDougal Sullivan Gardens is an important district in the history of housing in New York City. The 1920 alterations to the then deteriorated Greek Revival houses created uniform rear facades facing a common garden. The architectural significance of these rear facades is much greater than for typical rowhouse districts. The presentation materials, excuse me, give little indication of the uniformity of appearance of these rear facades. The three pictures in our written testimony show that most and likely all of the rear facades at the parlor floor retain their historic configuration of three multi-light double-hung windows in punched masonry openings. Some of the ground floor facades have been changed, but the overall effect of the facades facing the common gardens is of a consistent treatment throughout. The proposed alteration of the rear parlor floor windows is typical of the kind of change the commission regularly approves in other districts. In this district, however, such a change is not appropriate. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, up next, we will have Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. This application should include more comprehensive photos of the adjacent rear facades in this row. Given that this district was designated in large part for its shared garden, HGC finds this proposal inappropriate because it changes the parlor floor rear window configuration when the rest of the parlor floor windows on the row remain intact. Thank you.
Any other members of the public joining us via Zoom would like to speak, please use the raise hand function.
Okay, well, wait, wait till we finish all the testimony.
All right, seeing no raised hands on Zoom, I will note that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval provided that the rooftop addition is set back from the south side of the building to distinguish it as a rooftop structure.
All right, thank you, Stephen. All right, you can now respond to the comments we've heard.
Um, hello, my name is Brian Sisney. I'm the owner of this project and I want to thank you guys for considering the project at 74 McDougal. My husband and I are building our forever home here, a place where we plan to raise our family and contribute to this incredible neighborhood for years to come. Uh, we are deeply committed to preserving, um, uh, this cherished house and maintaining the character of the block and honoring the neighbors' historic fabric. This is a once-in-a-lifetime project for us. I have a genuine appreciation for the process and the commission's role in safeguarding the city's architectural history. With that in mind, we have designed a thoughtful renovation that respects the building's original character while incorporating necessary updates for modern living in line with enhancements the LPC has previously approved. This home is not just an investment, but a legacy, and I am fully committed to preserving and caring for it so that it can be enjoyed for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks. In regards to some of the comments from the community, I think that they all were bringing up very interesting and valid comments. Specifically, when we talk about the common yard, since we addressed that at the beginning, it is important to note that it's already an eclectic mix of different modifications, including Juliette balconies, enlargements, and changing of window size and proportion. With the community board, we had a very productive conversation about how to deal with the southern wall of the facade. And the intention was to create some sort of an acknowledgement that this was still a vertical addition without necessarily changing the orientation and location. So by adding the windows, we felt like it actually created a sort of happy medium where it still looked like an addition bulkhead, but it also was carrying that language from the rest of the building. In terms of the other photos required, we can easily produce any information that anyone in the community would like to review regarding the rear facades or other images of the mockup taken from any angle on the street. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any final questions on this one? Oh, okay, so let's move to close the hearing and begin our discussion. And Commissioner Latfi, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
No, no.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to discuss this application, which has two components. One is the rooftop addition, uh, which is visible over the side wall and also from a further block away, looking through a park, you can see it over the front facade. And for the modification of the parlor floor window opening on the rear facade.
Can I?
Yes.
A clarification. The visibility from the garden, which is a community garden, but not a public space. I mean, we do, uh, regulate the back of houses, even if they're not visible. But, but there is a distinction, I think a more important issue if it's publicly accessible. I mean.
So the, yeah, so the, the, the visibility I was referring to was actually from the street over the front facade, but at the rear facade, as we heard in testimony, this district was designated for this unique sort of shared common garden space. And so we have looked at both the visibility of rooftop additions on that green space and from that green space as well as changes to the rear facades.
And so those visible changes, it's seen, it's scored with all that approved by House? Maybe that's a challenge there.
I did take a little time to look at the past approvals here. And, and actually, we have designation photos from within the garden, which is interesting because it's rear facades. But we have, we have a snapshot of that. And there's obviously a lot of trees and other things going on. So it's hard to tell exactly what, what is at every building. But what I observed was at time of designation, there was at least one sort of combined basement level opening. There were a few balconies and I think some lengthening of windows at parlor level and maybe the floor above. And since then, the commission has reviewed a few applications of the same sort. Um, I've not, I did not come across a combining of openings at the parlor level as a commission approval, nor did I see one that was asked for and denied. It just hadn't been requested up to this point. Uh, but there were some commission approvals for third-floor balconies and lengthening of windows at the parlor without, without combining them. As for the rooftop additions, the commission has reviewed those and it seems they generally like to see a bit of openness with the approvals that were made in terms of what one might see from the gardens, so it had a lighter feeling to it. But, uh, in each case, there was some moderate visibility of those additions from within the garden that was found acceptable and appropriate.
All right. Okay, so with that, would you be comfortable starting the discussion?
Volunteer. I will, though. You know, if we just go in precedent, my question earlier about a rooftop addition being something that is recessive, you don't really notice it, da, 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 da. I, I think we're going to go against, uh, some of you know, I don't view much of anything here as a precedent. It's, it's always a one-off for me. And I'm thinking here, maybe more than normal, about just what is good design? What is a very good design? And I'm thinking that this um, is unusual, you know, the, the normal thing, we would set it back two or three feet and it would be, you know, out of dark gray metal and blah, blah, blah. I'm thinking here, for me, differently. I'm thinking that, that, that going up there and treating this like a wall that was meant to be seen, and those windows, I think, added an incredible, wow, you don't need them. I know there's plenty of light up there, but there's something about those windows as a monitor or something element up there. It's just, I really like the design. So I'm sort of going back to being a good design idea here and thinking that it's, it's a very elegant solution. So yes, it's very visible, uh, from a lot of different places also, which makes it ever more so maybe important that it be what I'm, what I, at least personally, I'm calling good design. You might feel differently around the table. So I'm okay with that then, therefore. In the back, uh, I, again, I think there's been enough change in additions and modifications and interesting design ideas, which are not seen by the public, but are seen in this context of a, of a private community-only garden, that it's, it's an acceptable alteration. And then again, it is also beautiful design. Uh, whether it has precedent or not, it's still to me a beautiful design. So I'm for it.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Um, I was just thinking about Sunnyside Gardens, where of course you have a community garden and everything. You know, mostly can see from the back. I mean, for that matter, our Jackson Heights District is, uh, the garden is a communal garden for the entire block. So, but you know, we, we don't have a lot of changes in the back at the moment. So it's not an issue on our, in our particular case. Anyway, I, it's a difficult issue always when you have a visible addition and you're often kind of stuck with this when you have a low building. It's hard to, you know, even, they still would have some visibility if they were building of the same size, but it would be greatly reduced. I do think that personally, that if they made the, they didn't have, if they had the side look, uh, you know, more, um, you know, it didn't have any penetration, just looked, uh, you know, like a, a flat piece, that that would be, cause it to look more like a bulkhead or something, and that, and that would be desirable in this instance. Um, so I think that's the main thing I would suggest. You know, I don't know, they try to reduce the size, what they could really do with it. I think the, the main thing would be just to try to, you know, make that side look more like a piece of rooftop furniture than, you know, than a addition.
And the, the fenestration at the rear facade?
I'm okay with that. I, I, I don't think that, I don't think it's.
Okay.
It calls undue attention to itself in the block, you know? I think it's an issue.
Thank you. Commissioner Latfi?
So the applicant did do a nice job designing this and presenting this, by the way. I'm just going to start with the rear facade. I think, um, what they're doing at the parlor floor is blends sort of perfectly with what's there, even though they're combining the win- windows, you, you almost don't even pay attention to it. So, um, I think it's understated and it works and I can accept it. The, um, I think on the, the rooftop addition, given the size of this building and the visibility, is just a bit too much. You know, we were shown 88 McDougal as a, um, example. I actually think that was sort of a fantastic example, because it accomplishes what it needs to and it's, its visibility is, is not so great. So I think it needs to be set down and maybe sloping it is a good idea. And, um, there should be some thought given to, uh, the color.
Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, um, in the rear facade, looking at what we've approved in the past, I think that I can approve what's being proposed on the rear. For the rooftop, um, in terms of aesthetics, they chose to, to propose something that would look like it was the original design of the building and the treatment of the, of the party wall, the side facade. I don't necessarily have an issue with that. And I don't have an issue necessarily with, uh, celebrating an addition to a building on historic, uh, volume. But I do think that this specific volume is a little large. And it's really because of this exposed lot to the neighbor and, and the visibility from this, I think, the south and the west corner. Regardless of how it's treated, it does seem larger than we would normally allow in terms of the amount of visibility of the addition for many, many angles. So I do think that the applicant does, should look at, and there are ways to do it, to reduce the mass of what's there from that south party wall. The aesthetics, I, I can be open to in terms of material and expression, but I do think it does need an attempt to, to reduce its scale.
Okay, Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I, I want to say that this presentation was very well done. I can tell that the applicant put a lot of thought and effort into, um, you know, what do we do with the visibility, which, you know, for, for various reasons is there? And I also think it was extremely well presented. Um, so, you know, congratulations. I agree with Commissioner Bland, um, for all the reasons that he stated, so I can find this appropriate as presented.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
So first of all, the rear yard's fine by me, so that's easy. And my initial reaction is the rooftop addition should be reduced a bit, sloped or something over the stairs, so that when you're looking, it isn't just a flat wall and a separate material. However, Commissioner Bland makes a pretty good case that maybe it doesn't. So I would say it would be good to reduce it a bit, but, uh, I can probably live with it as is besides that.
Right, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I, I think it is interesting that we are encountering this. And I, I agree with Vice Chair Bland that, uh, you know, in this instance, given this high visibility, that, uh, it is, is, I can find it appropriate to, to go along this route. Whether you want to reduce in scale, uh, the size, that's up to the commission.
Okay. All right, so I think, um, you did do a very nice presentation and thank you for that. And I think it helped the commission here a lot as we evaluated this application. And I think that, um, we have unanimous support for the rear, the change at the rear. I think with respect to the rooftop addition, there is some, um, there are some commissioners who are open to it, even as is, but there are, in order to vote on something, we need six. And so there aren't quite six in that camp. And so some others have suggested that it be reduced somewhat or set back. So we won't take an action and we'll give you an opportunity to come back and, and, and we'll leave it for you to determine whether you set it back, whether you slope it, or, you know, how you approach it holistically, because I think the design is an important feature that many commissioners have, um, appreciated. So we'll let you design how to sort of scale that down a little bit. Okay? And we'll move to the next item. Thank you.
And the next item is public hearing item number 12.
The next item is public hearing item number 12, LPC 25-06756. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1283, lot 17, 400 Madison Avenue. The 400 Madison Avenue building, individual landmark. This is a neo Gothic style skyscraper designed by H. Craig Severance Incorporated, built 1928 to 29. The application is to replace storefront infill and install signage.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Sorry. Erin Ruley Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners. We're the preservation consultants for this project at 400 Madison. I'm joined today by Ari Weissfelder of MKTA Architects. They're the project architects. And Nancy Repetto of Ponte Project Management. Sorry about that. So as Corey said, the project is located at 400 Madison. It's an individual landmark. It was designated in 2016. And the application is to replace one storefront and propose new signage for a new restaurant tenant. The existing building is a 21 story skyscraper designed by H. Craig Severance and constructed 1928 and 29. It's a really spectacular building. As you can see, it's occupies the full block front between 47th and 48th streets. It has three primary facades. So it has the narrow facades on the side streets and then that broad breadth of the building stretching along Madison. And the application that we're going to be reviewing today, the proposal, we can see here in the lower rendering, the existing condition's on the top and proposed condition is on the bottom. So it's new storefront infill, signage at the entryway. There's some signage, a bracket sign proposed at the pier. The new infill will be set within a historic bronze frame that's being retained. And the granite bulkheads will be salvaged and reused as part of this. And the proposal is really to create a new ADA compliant central entry within the bay, flanked by two display windows. And this project retains all of the historic fabric. The, the granite, existing granite bulkheads will be salvaged and reused. It will allow for elements that are missing to be recreated. And in this context, would be the only storefront in the building that has historic fabric remaining at, with a sympathetic infill. All of the storefronts have been replaced by the time of designation. So to look at that a bit more closely, here's a, a image of the, the base of the building. As you can see, it's five stories. So it has this very attenuated reading at the base of the building. But the ground floor storefronts are very much compressed by this granite bull nose that extends across the, the top of the first ground floor. And that acts as the cornice. This element creates some complexities for, for both the storefronts and its signage, but we'll look at that in a little bit more detail. And the bay that we're going to be looking at is the second bay along Madison from the south. As I mentioned, all of the storefronts had been replaced by the time of designation in 2016. There are, I believe, 10 storefronts along Madison Avenue plus the building entry. All of the storefronts were replaced in 2015, 2016 with the stainless steel, the stainless steel system. There are three storefronts that retain some amount of bronze surround. And this subject bay is, is one of them. Just to give you a sense of how the building looked historically, we have the photos right after the building was completed. So again, that really, the verticality and it's, one of the significant elements of the building is its terracotta cladding and the, the treatment of it where it was meant to radiate light in the streetscape. And all of the, the ground, the retail tenants at the ground floor, there were bronze storefronts. And on the upper floors, it was sunlight everywhere because the floor plate was so compact. There were windows along the building throughout. So you can see in the floor plan what that footprint looks like at the ground floor. In terms of the storefronts, this view of the, the original main entry on Madison, which was located right here, gives you a sense of the, the conditions. So we had pilasters, bronze pilasters at the corner of the storefront. And then a fascia along the top. Below that is a, a smaller fascia. That was the awning pocket for the storefront and then granite bulkheads with bronze infill. And then in terms of the plan, you can see there were storefronts lining the, the, the street frontage along Madison. And the entries were paired around the columns. So each, every other bay was grouped around, the entries were grouped around the, the columns. And as we see in the existing condition, our, our entry currently is on the north side of the storefront. This was showing it on the south side. So we know that there's already been modification at the, at the bulkhead in our storefront. Here, just a few more historic photographs, 1940 tax photo. Storefronts look pretty consistent to the historic condition at that time. You can see the awnings projecting out right below the, that upper fascia from the awning pocket. And then looking north along Madison in the 1960s, we start to get, get a sense of the changes that are occurring. The corner's been over clad for the Adlib Club. And then to the north, the main entry has already been re-clad and reconfigured at that time. But again, still awnings along the, the storefronts from that awning pocket location. So here's the existing conditions. We have a historic bronze pilaster at the south edge. The upper fascia extending across below that is a, a nonhistoric panel that's covering what would have been the awning pocket. This is the only storefront that has this configuration. All of the other two historic storefront, historic surrounds, the, the awning pocket has been removed. And there, the storefronts go all the way up to this molded profile. We have nonhistoric infill. It's about 30 or 40 years old. Black aluminum and then that existing granite bulkhead. And here we can see that, that the pieces have been cut. So, and we know from the plans that there's been reconfiguration, much like all storefronts throughout history. And then on the north side of the storefront, you can see that the pilaster is missing on the north side. So we have the, the capital and then the pilaster below has been removed. Those conditions in a bit more detail. The base of the pilaster and the shaft looking up toward the top. This is the extant pilaster at the south side of the bay. The existing entryway with the double fascia and the awning pocket beyond and where the historic pilaster would have been. And here you can see how it's been removed at that corner. Also just point out, this is the granite bull nose at the, that acts as the cornice to the upper floor, to the ground floor and then the bed mold below that, which will be relevant as we start to look at the signage details. Overall base configurations, just to give you a sense of the overall breadth of the building. We've identified the bays that have extant historic fabric by the red circle. So this is the bay we're looking at, number two. Bay five has that upper fascia that's been retained. And bay six also has the upper fascia, but the, the lower awning pocket fascia has been removed. And so here's our proposed condition. Chopped, the salad restaurant will be moving into three bays of the, of the storefronts. Overall base detail elevation, we have the proposed condition. So retaining all of the existing bronze work, replicating the north pilaster so that it matches the, the pilaster at the south. The new storefront system, it is aluminum. It'll be finished to match the bronze finish of the surrounding storefront, of the surrounding bronze and a double, double leaf door at the center, recessed 18 inches and reinstalling the existing granite at the bulkheads. We have signage at the entry and then the, the bracket sign. In plan, here are the details. Can see the recessed entry, again, going back 18 inches. And the new storefront system, we'll look at each of these areas in detail. That we have on the left, this is the extant pilaster and the new aluminum storefront system. We're applying new molded trim so that it gives it a little bit of depth and texture within the system. As I said, there's, there are no extant bronze storefronts remaining. And so the use of aluminum in this instance feels like the right approach. And especially giving it the, a, a little bit of the detail and profile that would be more consistent with a historic storefront. And on the north end, replicating that pilaster and having that same detail and storefront system at the north end. In vertical section, similar condition, providing the, at, below the existing bronze framing, the aluminum system and the trim detail so that there's a continuous bead all the way around the storefront. And the details of that storefront system here. The, the signage we're going to look at, at the very end of the presentation, but you can see here, it is approximately four inches from the face of the fascia. It's going to be adhesively applied. This is again, a unique condition in the building. There's no other storefront that has that, that double fascia condition. And what we're proposing is a, a unique solution to those existing conditions. So the, the, the letters themselves are 15 inches, which is fairly typical for storefront signage. And it's going to straddle the bead that divides the, the molded edge that divides the two, the two fascias. Look at that a little bit closer. At the entry, the new proposed entry, you'll have styles and rails, a framed, a framed door. All the materials will be consistent with the storefront system. And here, the, just a closer detail of the door framing and soffit below. Further details at a larger scale. And then the signage. As I mentioned, it's 15 inches tall and would extend the full height of the, the fascias and be framed at the top and bottom by the, the molded edge of the, of the existing bronze framing. And the, all of the, the other two bronze storefronts that, again, that awning pocket has been removed and they all end with the, this molded profile that's at the center of the, of the bay. The existing signage, which is located on that upper fascia, is five and a half inches in height. It makes it very hard to read. It's very busy, kind of frenetic section of, of Madison Avenue. And so what's being proposed is a condition that really relates to the, the existing condition of the storefront itself. So 15 inch halo lit letters, we'll look at the, that in section. And then the bracket sign in the masonry pier to the south. How that system would work in terms of the halo lit sign, the front half of the sign would be white painted metal, front and edges. And then the, the back edge would be acrylic and illuminated. So it would glow from the sides rather than a traditional halo lit sign which would reflect off of the backup material. This is because we can't pin mount into the, into the bronze. We're proposing adhesively applied letters that are scribed to fit the, the detail of the, of the panels. And then through that nonhistoric panel that's over the, the awning pocket, there would be one feed per letter, so five points of attachment for the low voltage feed. And then the bracket sign. So the bracket sign is, is a real kind of challenge for the project. They have a very low base. So signs have to be at least 10 feet above the sidewalk. The bottom of the, the sign has to be 10 feet above the sidewalk. When you get to that point, we're right below the bull nose of the, of the building base. So what is being proposed is a bracket that attaches at the plain masonry through the, through the mortar joints, right below the bed mold. And then pops up and extends out and gives us a little bit of clearance away from the, the, the bull nose and bed molding. And allows for the sign to sort of not be crowding the, the, the bull nose itself. We have a limitation on, of 18 inches from the property line in order to accommodate the sign. So it's, it's really kind of, you're working within a very small limited area. And, and so that sign will be aluminum and the finishes will be this sort of range of, of grains, a teal, darker teal. And the letters will be applied acrylic, those are yellow. And the total thickness of the sign itself would be three inches. And again, it's mounted through the mortar joints and projecting enough that we think it's going to be, you'll have a clear reading of the, of the, the molding and the, the bull nose itself and not feel like it's interfering with the architecture of the building. And with that, it's the end.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
I, I wasn't quite sure I understood what you actually see when you see the five letters of, or whatever. Yeah, five letters. Do you see the whole surface lit like that?
No, no, no. You only see the edge, the edges from the side, the whole.
That's what I thought I heard you say, but then I don't see it.
Um, it is, okay, so right here, this thickness, the first two inches of the letter in section are metal. So that will not glow. The lit surface is the back two inches of the, of the sign for a total of something like four inches.
Why am I not getting that? Sorry. So again, put the, put the elevation up. So just kind of.
From this perspective, you would see white painted metal letters. And there would be a glow that is reflecting from the back because a small area of the back of the letter would be lit, but not, it's not coming through the front face. Completely opaque.
So there's no light coming through any part of the front face?
No.
That's the true halo concept.
Yeah. And, and two, and two inches on the, on the side of it is, is metal as well. So it's actually really far recessed from the front face of the, the letter.
Is the full letter solid? Back to the, that.
The front, the.
The side.
The side is solid. It's, it goes. It good, right, it goes from. Exactly. What goes from metal to acrylic.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And the acrylics.
Scribed, it is.
File of the metal sits right over it?
Yes.
Yep. Hang on, Commissioner Ginsburg and then Commissioner.
So then related to that, my question is you're gluing these to the bronze. Is that, how is that?
It is, it is removable with, yeah.
Commissioner Master?
So I guess we have a total of three signs? The bracket sign, the sign above the double doors and then the acrylic, the, the.
There, there are three signs, but the, the one here, this is decal, that's staff level. It's two signs.
Okay.
This is one sign. The front, front face is opaque and metal.
Right.
The back of it will glow because there's acrylic instead of metal blocking. If, if the whole thing were lit, if you wouldn't be able to see light through any of the metal portions, but just through the acrylic portion.
So it's this sign and then the bracket sign?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Where's the one on the right?
On, on the window, it's a decal.
Oh, on the glass.
Glass, exactly. But two, but two bays over, I'm sorry, yes. It's staff level, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Just for you, how the color is used? Three colors in addition to the white.
Yes, yes. The three colors are all on the bracket sign. And if you see here, you can, it's kind of divided in the middle. It's darker on the bottom and light on the top. And then the yellow letters sort of sit over the, the transition point of the, the two teal colors.
So you're using the kind of the brand.
Brand identity, yes.
Brand identity on the small bracket sign, but a plain sign, white sign on the storefront.
So on this landmark, beautiful landmark building, just not understanding if there's any kind of plan about how the signage is handled up and around the door. Is there a master plan? Is there, are you evolving it to a certain, is it already there? And this is the valuation?
Sure. No, so there, there is no master plan. Again, it's a fairly recent designation, 2016. And we have a wide variety across, these are the, these are the Madison Avenue bays. So all, you see all the stainless steel. There's no, there's no uniform signage. So I think this is the first application that they've had for a storefront replacement or, or for a tenant change frankly. So I think this is the first application that they've had for a storefront replacement or or for a tenant change, frankly. So there they have, this is sort of building toward what can in the future, what in the future could become a building standard. In terms of in terms of infill, but I would say because Bay Two is different than all of the other bays. As I mentioned, so here is, let me go to that, it's that one. So this is Bay Two, our our bay. This is the next bay with the historic material in it. And you can see there's no awning pocket. And what they've done is put signage below the below that sort of top fascia. And then the other one, also no awning pocket and has like a a sign box in their transom here. So Bay Two is really a unique condition. And I don't think if there if they were to evolve to a standard for the building, I don't think that what would be approved here would dictate what happens elsewhere, because we do have this unique condition that isn't matched anywhere else. Just the top fascia, not the double fascia.
So the dub, the lower part of the fascia is conceals what concealed historically an awning. And so the other storefronts don't have that anymore. So so the height of that is.
That is, that's on the glazing, right? But that same location in our storefront is this br- bronze like panel below the sign. Do you see that? So all the storefronts historically had that double fascia. But this is the only one that retains, because the top one was ostensibly for signage. The bottom one was the awning pocket. All the awning pockets were the awning pockets were removed from the other two historic bays. So nobody has the same condition as what exists in Bay Two. No, they're all different. They're all different.
No, just it's this one bay and then two bits, a minute, so there's a sign in the window.
Let me go back to the uh, the rendering, maybe that's most helpful.
Because there's no back of the point of the storefront or the signage, this for us of the permission or this each application. You don't know what's gonna happen next. You don't know what's, how to, because they're also different in each bay. You're gonna get different solutions to them, which I'm a little concerned that there's no, no consensus. Overall, there's nothing to do with that.
I would also make the point that the. The reason we came forward with a single storefront, which is pretty atypical, but it is, there's specific lease. Requirements that are being met by this application, I should have said this earlier. And that there just wasn't an ability or time to put together a master plan to address the building holistically. That really needs to, you need to be able to look at the, you know, leasing terms going forward and understanding how the spaces are going to be used. And it needs a more comprehensive look than we had the ability to address at this point.
Because the operation of the doors, when I look at this and I see the plan. There was intent in the storefronts to pair the doors of pilaster. There was an organization that went through every one of these. And it looks like it's now somewhat lost, the glass go both ways. That centered pairs that are existing, not just the one that's standing on the other side.
Yeah, I mean, one thing I would say is that, you know, the storefronts of large commercial buildings. Historically changed a lot. And so when we designate these building types as individual landmarks. Usually the ground floor is heavily altered and usually there is no uniformity. And and we do have to look at those storefronts if they're coming forward by the tenant on a case by case basis. We can't compel a master plan, even though we would recommend it. Because really, the master plan is an administrative tool that allows them to get a faster approval by not having to come back all the time. And there's a prototype approved. So, you know, I think that it's a. It's a condition at the bot- at the base of this building that is not uniform. And we'll have to think about that as we think about the proposal, but it is not unique. This is very typical for many of our individual landmarks that are this type of building.
Can you go to rendering of the proposal? The one that has double doors.
This, this one?
You were talking about the dark aluminum. Systems like the Robert Mark one. There's a distinction that you were making between the bronze element and the infill. Making that way or underneath that within that frame, which you're showing on on your proposal too. But in your case, the infill is also done with the bronze style lines.
Yes.
And the same finish as the historic.
Well, this, this is existing.
Existing, yeah.
That double, exactly.
But you're keeping the infill within that consistent with that.
Yes. Yes.
Center doors are otherwise matching the historic infill, which that could be, you know, be a model.
But the elements themselves kind of distinguish between storefront and the visions of all of them.
Yes. Yeah, you can't.
Yeah.
Get that thinness that was attainable in nineteen twenty eight. Unfortunately.
Okay, other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. I'll note that there's no one in the hearing room to speak on this item, so we'll turn it over to Stephen and see if there are any remote participants.
Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer testimony, please use the raise hand function. Lucy Levine, I will be elevating you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HDC feels that the applicant signage is too large. It should not cross the divided transom. We feel the existing Madison Jeweler signage, which sits in the upper band of the transom, or the Robert Mark window signage below the transom, are both appropriate solutions. As a next step, we suggest the building pursue a storefront master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public joining via Zoom who would like to offer testimony? Okay, seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Five recommends approval. And also recommends the establishment of a master plan for future alterations to the building.
Okay. All right, do you like to respond? Yeah.
Sure, I think. HDC's comments are very reasonable. We appreciate them. A master plan, yes, and needs to be considered, obviously. And as the spaces start to turn over and as again, it was a recent designation, fairly recent designation. And I think we went through this in terms of the signage and the size of the signage. It's fifteen inches. Staff rules allow for eighteen inches of signage. We have a unique condition here, so that's why we're talking about it. But it's within the realm of staff level height. And the detail again is unique to this bay. And we think that the the design is really geared to address that condition in order to give them some amount of visibility. The existing sign is five and a half inches in height. And the, we can't match the Robert Mark sign because our condition is just different. Then than what exists in that bay. They have a lot more height in their glazing area. Our storefront is shorter and we have more bronze. So it's a, it's a very specific design to address these very specific conditions.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any final questions?
Last, the glass is not dark tinted.
All right, so let's begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion? Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have this building with different storefront conditions, some remnants of historic fabric at the Robert Mark storefront. This is the most intact storefront, which has this double fascia at the top. And the proposal is to reconfigure it to have center doors and otherwise match the historic profiles and details. And then to do the fifteen inch sign on that fascia. And to do a small bracket sign that is, I think it was fourteen and a half inches by seventeen. That would be the only sign with the brand color. And then the the graphic in the other window is being approved at staff level. So Commissioner Ginsburg, would you like to start this one?
Okay, I I think this is pretty reasonable. I I think it would be good to have a master plan, but I realize that isn't necessarily in the applicant's control. I'll be curious what the other commissioners say about the thickness of the letters, but I can approve this.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, it's the same here. I I wish that there's a master plan, but obviously that's not before us right now. Yeah, I I can find this appropriate at this moment, but the, I hope they work with the staff. Because the the actual details of materials.
Okay, Vice Chair Bland?
Not sure I understand why a master plan would be done if every single condition is unique. But be that as it may. I would just think each individual store owner would figure it out for himself. I don't know why I'm so dense. I I keep not quite understanding the letterish. But I'm gonna rest with my fellows and say that I can approve it.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I obviously with others would urge that the owner look at a master plan, both for the benefit of the tenants. And, you know, just coming to us with continuous reviews. I think that the amount of signage is appropriate. I think that the, you know, actually the color of the sign and so forth, if if we were doing a master plan, it'd be more like the Robert Mark, I think. Not not sort of like this white sort of very forward something sign. I appreciate the fact it's a single application and it is for this one somewhat unusual storefront. So I guess I can approve it as presented, but it's, you know. It, you know, I think they could readily put together something that would be appropriate for all the storefronts, which would be. You know, a great benefit for this individual landmark.
All right, Commissioner Lutti?
I have to say first that I'm kind of happy to see this use here, because it says to me. People are coming back to the office. So if they're coming back to the office, they need to eat lunch. So I also can appreciate the fact that you would like, as a result, to get this done. And that what you're proposing does its best to. Work within the decorative elements that are here. And I think the three components, you know, because everything's different, I don't think it's worth it to sort of. And you need to sign a lease. I don't think it's really everything meaning every unit. It's worth it to really like discuss whether or not the typeface is too thick. I think the size is fine. I think the bracket sign works. The entryway is good. All that is fine, but I do really think that a master plan on a building like this, which is a beautiful building. And still has. And has, you know, retained some of its original elements. It's a good thing to consider moving forward and it will help you. But I think in the long run, and we have other applicants, like I love to refer to Rockefeller Center. Because they do this all the time. They cut, you know, they come up with a master plan. They decide how they're gonna work with their retail. And it makes approvals.
Yeah.
It not only enhances the landmark and it retains its wonderful value, but it makes it easier for approval. So I would encourage that.
All right, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I don't have that much to add. I I I can approve this. I think Diana's comment about the color was one thing that I tended to agree with. That does seem to to scream at me a lot, the 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 letters. I also noticed that Chop does use different colors of their brand on different stores. The fact that you've got an acrylic on the backside, which is lit, I think will help soften that and not scream internally lit white chopped on there. So I can approve it. I I would like the the applicant to work with staff on the final finish of that metal piece. To to see visually if it feels too contrasting though.
Okay. And Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I think this is appropriate. I think they did a very nice job on the infill and bringing back a lot of the bronze elements and the granite bulkhead. And I think that the signage, given that they have three bays, is a very modest request.
All right, so I think we can go ahead and approve this. Thank you.
With regards to LPC twenty five dash oh six seven five six, four hundred Madison Avenue. Four hundred Madison Avenue Building Individual Landmark. A neo Gothic style skyscraper designed by H. Craig Severance Inc. and built in nineteen twenty eight, twenty nine. Application is to replace storefront infill and install signage. I recommend approval, finding that the historic decorative elements of the brass storefront will be retained. And only nonhistoric storefront infill will be removed. That the only portion of the historic pink granite bulkhead will be carefully removed and salvaged for later use. And that the proposed configuration of new storefront infill, featuring a center entrance flank by display windows, will be symmetrical. And typical of storefront configurations found at buildings of this type, style and age. The finish and details of the proposed storefront infill will be harmonious with the remaining historic fabric. That the proposed dimensional letter signage will be attached using adhesives. And any penetration for conduit will only affect mon- modern cladding. That the exposed acrylic sides of the proposed letters will recall halo lighting and will be unobtrusive in daylight. While allowing for an indirect soft glow at night. That the proposed bracket sign will be installed at plain masonry. That the face to face width of the proposed bracket sign will be proportional to the overall size of the sign at the adjacent storefronts. And will not cause undue attention to itself. That the culminative amount of signage will not overwhelm the building. And the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the individual landmark.
And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Bark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutti? Commissioner Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passed.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number thirteen. LPC twenty five dash zero five four eight one. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Block thirteen eighty one, lot thirty five, six forty Park Avenue, AKA sixty five to seventy five. East sixty sixth street in the Upper East Side Historic District. This is a neo Italian Renaissance style apartment building designed by J E R Carpenter and built in nineteen thirteen to fourteen. And the application is to replace windows.
Good afternoon to you all. My name's Matthew Vitter and I'm the architect. I'm joined with Alejandro Stojanovich, who is the owner's rep for this project. The renovation of the twelfth floor of six forty Park Avenue. So let's move right on to the project. So here's our tax lot photo from 1940. Unfortunately, the photographer neglected to show in full our 12th floor, but our project is all the way at the top. This is a very interesting building. As mentioned, it was built in the, around 1913 by J.E.R. Carpenter, and it was a rental, a luxury rental building. For people who on the Upper East Side did not want to live in townhouses and wanted the conveniences of luxury living on a full floor. So I read in the New York Times that among the early adopters of this type of living. Were the two brothers of the Pratt family. The sons of Charles Pratt, who is a partner at Standard Oil. And they rented the top two floors at the opening of the building and they paid probably about $12,000 a year. For an 18 room apartment. Hard to get my head around that. What's interesting also about this building, of course, is that it is before the 1930s zoning changes. So it's a nice big pillar of the building. We are going to replace all of the windows on the upper floor and we're going to give this new building, this old building. A uniform appearance on the top floor. Now we, our windows are, as you can see, noted up there. The built, they are probably about 150 feet above the street level. Here's a picture of our condition, looking south on the left and looking up at the cornice. All of this is limestone, beautifully cut limestone. What makes this installation so nice is that our windows are set back from the face of the masonry by six and a half inches. And there is a decorative bullnose horse that sort of hides the windows somewhat. They're deeply set back. It gives a nice sculptural appearance to the building. The windows that we're proposing are simulated double hung. The original windows, of course, would have been wood counterweight and chain windows with single glazing. Ours are going to be triple glazed. Triple glaze for the thermal performance, of course, which I understand are, these windows are routinely approved at staff level. What makes this project exceptional is that it's going to be in the entire floor of this building. And the windows will be clad. Wood is a wonderful material. It's great to work with. It's easy to cut, of course, and replace. The problem, of course, is maintenance. It's rather beastly to paint a window on the 12th floor and we don't want to impose hardships on our client. So we adopted the clad wood window. This is a, to give you a sense of the scale of the windows, the windows are six foot eight high and four foot six wide. So they're very, very big windows. Now, the orig, the windows that are currently there are aluminum clad windows, replacement windows. The brick molds are covered over with panning and a lot of silicone. We want to put in these simulated double hung windows. And the sashes, of course, given the size of these windows, the sashes are going to be a little bit more robust than what you would have seen. When the building was built in a wood, single glaze window. Here are the, here's the section. I'd like to point out to you that we endeavored to get this window right with the preservationist. We made multiple changes with our manufacturer. We initially set back the glazing plane of the lower sash from the upper sash so that it would really mimic a double hung window. Subsequently, we reduced the sizes of the sashes themselves on three different occasions. The most important change that was the most recent one, where we changed the thickness of the meeting rail of the window. So that it wouldn't really feel too massive, this window. And here is a plan detail showing at right the lever which will operate the window. As you know, these windows pivot in and they open up like an in swing casement, so you can clean them. The probability is that these windows will very rarely be open, really just for maintenance and cleaning and such. And here is a photograph of a, it's not the window we're getting, but it's very similar. It shows you the spacing between the individual panes of glass. We have about five eighths of an inch of argon gas. We have four gaskets. This is going to be a very, very good window in terms of thermal performance, but also acoustic performance. And this is rather important for our client, the ambassador for the Swiss government. They occasionally have recitals and meetings, lectures, and there is a fire department firehouse. A block and a half away. And there's also Lenox Hill Hospital, which is a few blocks to the north. And they can hear the acceleration of cars at the green light on Park Avenue, which is a very well traveled street. So we're hoping that the commission will approve this application. And I leave it to you to discuss it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions on this? Yes, Commissioner Chu?
That the, the structural members of the frame of the window are large here. And that's because of the scale of the window, right?
That's correct. These windows will weigh 329 pounds.
You can't tell if the building is huge, but they're big windows.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the profile comparison, I was just trying to understand why they're bigger because it's, it's the scale.
It's, yeah, it's the scale of the window, the size, the amount of glazing, really, when we're looking at it. If we had a single glazing, if we had triple glaze, if we had single glazing, it would not be an extraordinary effort and the sash itself would be considerably smaller.
And so the bottom is a casement in swing?
It in swing.
And the upper is fixed?
Fixed, that's correct.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Okay, let's move to public testimony and I'll note again, there's no one in the hearing room, so I will turn it over to Stephen to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carol. Any members of the public who are joining us remotely, please use the raise hand function. And I will promote you to panelists, after which we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. First, we have Zainab Toran.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Zainab Toran, speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends commands the applicant's initiative to improve energy efficiency and sound insulation at 640 Park Avenue. By replacing nonoriginal double hung windows with simulated double hung passive house windows in aluminum clad wood. While we do, we do not oppose the design for the minimally visible 12th floor windows. We believe a more comprehensive approach is needed for the rest of the building. Specifically, we think the building would greatly benefit from Windows' master plan to address the building's inconsistent facade. Which currently features a mix of single and double panel windows. This plan should guide the future alterations, ensuring a unified and historically accurate appearance. While balancing energy efficiency with the building's original design, including original sash operation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we will have John Graham.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. We continue to find these faux double hung windows inappropriate on historic buildings. The dimensions and details are far from those of historic windows. Their appearance, when the casement section is open, is incompatible with any historic window on any historic building. On the 13th floor, these differences aren't likely to be very noticeable, especially when the casements are closed. We are concerned, however, about the de facto precedent that will be set for the building. Without a master plan, can we expect to see other units on lower floors request the same thing? Will the commission be willing to say this type of window is inappropriate on lower floors? Will we get a hodgepodge of windows on the building, exactly the kind of thing designation is supposed to prevent? Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next, we will have Lucy Levine.
Hi Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HCC finds this window replacement appropriate and suggests as a next step that the building pursue a master plan. Thanks.
Yeah. See that we have no other members of the public in the Zoom, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Eight recommends approval. And that concludes public testimony.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to address any of the comments we've heard?
I don't really have any more thoughts to add here. I think it's pretty straightforward. Yeah.
All right, great. Okay, so we'll move to our discussion. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to replace the windows at the top floor with windows in a different. That has a different operation than the historic condition. It will otherwise match and return the historic configuration as well as closely match the historic details. And this, as we've heard, is a window type that we have approved in lots of buildings, different types of historic buildings. And in fact, we have a rule that allows the staff to approve this kind of window if it's being proposed for the entire building. And so this is here before us because it is only for one floor. So I think the question before us really is, at this top floor in these deeply, in this deeply recessed. Well, the windows are deeply recessed and the openings with a dark finish, will those changes be perceptible and detract from the rest of the building? So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I appreciate the detail provided for what is essentially just a typical window replacement and all similar conditions. I think that effort has been done to retain the historic condition of the lights that were there. I personally think that it's, it is so far up that that profile difference won't be that noticeable. It's something we're constantly dealing with is replacement of historic. As much as we love their fine details and lines, they don't perform. And I appreciate that this is actually improving the performance of the skin of the building by acoustic and conditioning. I think this is perfectly approvable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Master?
I agree, this is appropriate.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree and just would note, not only is the triple glaze important, double hungs never seal well and this will seal much better. So that's as important for the acoustic and energy as, as the triple glazing, which is also helps.
Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I agree with all the comments, especially that also from the distance so high up and that the fact that it's going to perform well.
Vice Chair Bland?
You know, the robust quality of the muscular quality of the building and the height above street level both make it clear that nobody is going to be able to tell the difference.
Yeah, Commissioner Chapin?
I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Lutfi?
I do as well.
I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Chu, would you make the motion?
25-0548, 1640 Park Avenue, AKA 6575 East 66th Street, Upper East Side Historic District. A Neo Italian Renaissance style apartment building thought by J.E.R. Carpenter and built in 1920. Supporting the application of this windows. Note that the building's scale, style, materials and details are highly future that contribute to the special architectural.
I recommend approval finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed high performance simulated double hung metal clad wood windows will match the historic windows in terms of configuration finish. That the operation of the windows, including a fixed upper sash and tilt and turn. Lower sash limited to a four inch tilt will accommodate accessibility, energy performance and other code requirements. And will only be perceptible when the lower sash is open. That the upper sash will be installed proud of the, of this lower stash. Closely recalling the offset placement of the historic double hung sashes. That the windows will be installed throughout the 12th top floor of the primary facades and will be separated from the double hung windows at the lower floors by band course. Helping to maintain a unified penetration pattern. And that the dimensions, profiles and details at the rails of the black painted windows within deep set window openings. At the 12th floor of the building will be a discreet presence within views from the street level.
Right, and Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark?
Chair Carol?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Mr. Master?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
Right, that's approved. Thank you. We'll move to the next and final item.
Last item is public hearing item number 14, LPC 25-05250. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1883, lot 59, 2878 Broadway in the Morningside Heights Historic District. This is a Friends Renaissance Revival style apartment building designed by Nebelen Bag, built in 1907 to 08. The application is to install signage.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. I'm John Pohanka. I go by Mac from Noble Signs and New York Sign Museum. I'm representing my client, Upside Pizza, owner and known as here, from 2878 Broadway and 112th Street in Morningside Heights. So this is the corner space on the ground floor. Has a couple of large windows and historically, or previously had onings which have been removed. The storefront is being repainted to match building color as there was peeling paint previously. The sign we're proposing is a two-piece neon sign that wraps the corner with a rounded corner bend. This would all be painted with automotive enamel finish. There's no channel letters on this. It's just all single tube neon, red and white. It's designed to match the Tom's Restaurant neon across the street, the Seinfeld Diner. They're directly across 112th Street from each other. So we've copied the sort of layout and scale. The size is different because ours has to match letter restrictions for LPC. So our square footage and area is set specifically for that. So our sizes are not to match the other sign, but are to match the proportions of these two storefronts. The boxes are 12 inches deep, including the glass with standoffs on the front. Chrome trim top and bottom, and then the top and bottom of the case are painted to be closer to the wall color. You see above the daytime view and then the nighttime view. So we're not doing full outlines or anything. We're just doing simple, simple line work with the neon. This is the other side. All the lettering behind the neon is hand painted, also in sign enamel. So you can see, we just have a few transformers in this sign. We tried to keep it minimal, so there's not a ton of power, but still will have a nice even glow. This is a fairly dark corner. There's not much street lighting. So when we went to the community board, they were actually very pleased that we're going to be doing this as, at night, this corner is increasingly dark. So you can see across the street is Tom's Restaurant. This is our storefront here, so we'd be matching the same style where you have hand painted background letters. Base mounted tubes with no channels, wrapping the corner cleanly. We're going to do a roundover. I'm going to show some examples of some signs we've done in the past that looked like that, so you can get an idea of what we're doing. that looked like that, so you can get an idea of what we're doing. These are the initial filing from our installing partner CAD. And so they're not accurate in terms of placement. They misunderstood the wrapping the corner. But as you see off of the request of community board and LPC, we've moved the sign down. It will be exactly at 10 feet, which is the DOB requirement. So as close to the storefront as possible. So here, you can see some historical signs from the neighborhood. This is our building here. There was originally a neon blade sign, but the projection is much bigger than is allowed by DOB now. So we opted to do something that matches the sign across the street. But you can see historically, a lot of the signs in the area were of this style with just enamel, simple cases, hand painting, and neon on top. All these references are from five blocks in either direction. So you can see the Nemo is a movie theater with exterior neon. There's a lot of neon in the area. This one is a full vertical, like is very common in West Village. So there was a lot of neon in the neighborhood previously. Now it's almost all awnings and plastic front letters. So we were seeking to try and design signage that fit these buildings a little more accurately and fit this, this time when the stretch was a little more cohesive. Now, this is our rendering of what the signs will actually look like. We've set them back as tight as possible while still having space for our mechanicals. The faces are the only brightly colored part of it. We've had everything else be more minimal. Here on the corner will be a roundover. So one case will dead-end into the other one with a rounded corner. These are some signs that we've done recently. These are all handmade by our studio. You've probably recognized a few of them. Upside Pizza is the same business. This is the Greenpoint location. This is not a neon location, but shows you the type of sign that we built for them with these rounded corners, hand painted details, chrome top and bottom trim. We build everything out of aluminum so that there's no rusting over time. A lot of the older neon signs in the city were porcelain originally, but through being screwed into and penetrated, they have huge rust issues. We seek to avoid all that with all of our stuff. So all our brackets and hardware and everything is aluminum or stainless steel. No, I wanted to introduce myself briefly.
Yeah. Come on up and just look into the microphone.
Always love the mic. Hi, how are you guys? My name is Noam Grossman. I am the owner of Upside Pizza. This will be the sixth location. Over the past six years, if you get a look, a bit of a closer look, there's a lot of graying in this beard. We, yeah, and basically, design is really important to us. Like, it's just as much about the pizza and the quality of the pizza, which has been known, you know, and has gotten New York Times reviews and Eater and all this stuff. It's just commonly become known as one of the top sizes in the city. Just a lot of hard work. But we'd like to couple that with like really beautiful store design and, you know, sinking some, you know, investment into the communities we're going into and kind of building in versus doing something contrast to what was there, what currently is there. So, for example, our Nolita location, we did a lot of research in Nolita around the area. What people did, you know, we rebuilt an entire sidewalk with the vault lights, for example, which was not a cheap project here. We could have gone really easily and just, you know, put up a non-neon sign, unilluminated, take an easy way out. But to me, it was super important to at least try because I think it's going to look really amazing on the street corner. It's going to solve an issue. I don't know if you guys have ever been by this exact corner, but it's super, super dark. It's, we actually, my business partner actually drove by last night and missed the store because there's nothing there. So he ended up with block up. You know, I think everything is to spec. We've been going back and forth with your department, which I appreciate you guys being so, so available, especially Liz. And, you know, we'd just like to do, you know, I hope to be here for the next 30, 40, 50 years. We've have a long-term lease with Columbia. They've been great. We obviously got this approved by them. The community board meeting I also went to. I think it's important to show up in person, just to kind of look everybody in the face and just, you know, kind of, it's much easier to log on on the Zoom and just, you know, kind of say a couple of words. But happy to field any questions like about the business or the smack nose a little bit more with the sign. But I appreciate your time and any questions, concerns, what have you. I'm here for that specific reason, so.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. I appreciate your time.
Commissioners, do we have any questions?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Is there lots of renderings here? This is the design proposal, right?
Yes, yes. There were two in the, in the middle that were, they placed it. Our expeditors, who are terrific expeditors and installers, CAD signs out of New Jersey. They install all of our large neons. They're very, very good, but they didn't send over the landmark signs before we sent them in. And we told them afterwards, we're like, "These aren't right." And so we worked with Liz to correct them before we went through community board or here. So those were changed before we started this process.
So it is, when I look at the street view photo that you provided, it's like bookending from the restaurant on the Upper East Side.
Exactly.
Turns the corner, has a similar elevation, almost the same exact elevation. The building historically has different details, but it has the base.
Yeah, very similar. So you can, you can see across.
Yeah, right there, restaurant in blue. Yes, that's sort of like.
That's the sign, a gateway to the street.
Okay.
All right.
Sarah, is there any signage on this building that was approved by the commission?
I think this is a fairly recent designation. So I think.
The rest of it.
Doesn't look like it.
Yeah.
Sort of a general case. Okay, thank you.
All right, let's take public testimony. Stephen, we'll see if we have any remote participants for this one.
Thank you. Anyone, I'm sorry, we only have one attendee, John Graham. I'll be promoting you to panelists. After which, we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you all have three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. John Graham for the Victorian Society in New York. The most interesting part of this proposal is that the proposed new sign is real neon. The fabricator, Noble Signs, has provided examples of their recent neon work. Their website is worth a look. It includes more examples of neon as well as other traditional signs, many types of which would be happy additions to historic buildings. This proposal exposes the nonsense about neon espoused by the recent applications for removal of neon at the Apollo Theater in the Rockefeller Center. Why did the commission not challenge their misleading statements about neon being outdated, unsafe, and increasingly unavailable? The shame is, those are historic neon signs on buildings for which the neon technology and aesthetic are especially fitting and appropriate. This proposal for a neon sign on a building that predates the development of such signs raises interesting questions. Can signs that we would once have considered inappropriate in design and materials for the buildings on which they were placed be found appropriate today? Has the passage of time rendered these kinds of mid-century signs significant designs in themselves and comfortable as layers on our historic buildings? The commission regularly approves sign designs and materials that postdate their buildings. We see no reason that neon should be treated differently, and we don't object to its use here. An issue is that the signs would be located on a band that was originally a series of transom windows. The transom windows were filled in prior to designation. The commission can't require that these be reopened, so using the space as a sign band is reasonable. The last question is whether some of the details should be revised. For example, should the sign not wrap the corner but allow the corner masonry pier to carry down to the sidewalk? We note that the famous Tom's Restaurant neon sign facing this corner across 112th Street wraps the corner of its building. That sign is in theory protected by the commission. Thank you, Commissioners.
Great. Okay, so that concludes our public testimony. I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Nine recommends approval.
All right, is there anything you'd like to say in response to the comments we've heard or any other final statements?
No, just that we, we're supportive of making sure that the neon continues in the city and there are new products to make it work better. We're in contact with a lot of the companies producing this stuff. We buy most of our parts out of California where it's more ubiquitous. We actually have found more issue with LED neon outside with it causing fires with water and freezing. And so while we'll use LED neon inside behind counters where breakable glass is not allowable, we find it to be an unacceptable product outside.
All right. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's close the hearing and begin our discussion. Commissioner Master, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Chu, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to begin our discussion for this sign on the corner storefront here that will have exposed neon that will be very similar to the sign across the street. Commissioner Luthfi, would you like to start?
Sure. Two terrific sign submissions today. Well, it's a great project. First of all, it's a great pizza, it's a great amenity for a neighborhood. And this historically has been a neighborhood that has been a location for a lot of neon signs as well as others. But you can see one right in on this particular page across the street. And I think it's very well done. It's attractive, it's simple in a way, it's understated, even though it's neon. But the neon itself is understated, which I really appreciated. It's not going to scream, but it will do another service in the neighborhood by lighting up a corner that is very dark. So I can approve this.
All right, Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I think this is an appropriate application. I think that the quality of the graphics is noted and definitely appreciated.
Commissioner Master.
Yeah, I agree. In fact, my daughter lives in this neighborhood, so I'm very happy that you're lighting up this corner. And again, the presentation was very well done.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
This is great, appropriate.
Mr. Chen.
Yeah, I can speak from experience that so many of our neighborhood, like Little Italy in Chinatown, we need lights that keep the corner, give you a sense of safety. So one note is that I hope the rendering, the color is actually a little bit brighter because I think the applicant stated it's a neon to red.
Vice Chair Bland. All right, Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, this is another one that could use some master plan. And it's, you know, I think that the sign is nice and, you know, very clean and would be a good model for some other signage on the building, anyway.
All right, so I think we're all in agreement. Commissioner Luthfi, would you make the motion?
In the matter of docket 25-05250, 2878 Broadway, Morningside Heights Historic District, a French Renaissance Revival style apartment building designed by Neville and Bag and built in 1907. Away, the application is to install signage. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Morningside Heights Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that there is historic precedent for a variety of signage types, including neo-signs, on this building and throughout the historic district. Therefore, the proposed signage will be in keeping with the commercial character of this stretch of Broadway. That the building's large scale can support an illuminated neon sign which wraps the corner. That the placement of the proposed sign will be within the building's sign band and will not damage or conceal any significant historic features. That proposed metal sign panel with neon letters will be consistent with other neon signage found within this historic district in terms of size, materials, design, and finish, and that the work will not detract from the special architectural or historic character of the building or the historic district.
Thank you. And Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark.
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Bland.
Aye.
Mr. Chapin.
Aye.
Mr. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Chu.
Aye.
Mr. Ginsburg.
Aye.
Mr. Luthfi.
Aye.
Mr. Master. Eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passed.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you very much. Good luck. And that concludes our public hearing today.